All right. Good evening, everybody. Please forgive us for starting just a couple of minutes late. We had a closed session for an hour to discuss staffing and personnel issues in the council and the staff of our town. We just finished and took a couple of minutes breather to scarf down a little bit of dinner before we started our meeting tonight. So forgive us for being just a few minutes late. The, welcome to our, let me call our town council meeting for June 8th order. And sorry that we are doing this entirely virtually, but I think as everybody realizes, we've had an extraordinary burst of additional COVID cases. And the council and the county generally, and I for one had it, my wife had it, both over it, very mild cases. Rich's wife has had it, a more serious case, but it looks like she'll be fine. But we just felt that under the circumstances, we should let everybody participate virtually for this council meeting. We'll make a decision in July as to whether we go hybrid or also stay virtual and trust that by September, we will be able to be back as normal. Anyway, for that, let me call our meeting to order. And first order of business is the May 22nd, May this year's financial report. And now ask our new treasurer Irene Lane to present what she would wish to regarding the month's figures.
Thank you, Mayor. So for the benefit of residents on the line here, our council terms run mid-May to mid-May, but our fiscal year runs from July 1st through June 30th. So as a result, we're in the 11th month of the, into this fiscal year of FY22. All that said, we're in a very strong financial position. We collected 22% more income tax revenue than we expected so far for the year and have only spent 78% against budgeted expenses for the fiscal year. A little bit lower as we did not spend as much on professional services such as land use and planning experts or public work such as snow removal. So that's what accounts for the undercount, if you will. Our general fund balance, also known as our reserve balance, is presently $12.75 million, which includes the $4 million that's been set aside for the farm women markets, sorry, Farm Women Market Parks Creation Project. We still have 1.1 million left over from ARPA funds that were provided during this fiscal year. And an additional 1.2 million is expected to be received for next fiscal year FY23. I mentioned these amounts because later on in tonight's agenda, there'll be some additional discussions where, where, where those funds will be coming into play. Another item that I just wanted to remind residents about is that in a typical fiscal year, 80 to 85% of our total operating revenue comes from income taxes. However, because of the way income tax revenues reported to the town by the state, we don't know how our fiscal year revenues will shape up until November. So what this means is that while our nest, while our fiscal year, a new one will begin on July 1st, and we've budgeted about 3.1 million in revenue from income tax payments this next fiscal year, the true revenue picture won't come into play or focus until November. That said, our, our town manager Todd Hoffman and the council always errors when, when formulating the budget on being holistic as well as strategic with budget planning. The last item I wanted to just bring to, to folks' attention and just spend a couple of minutes on is how the town pays its bills. So there's a multi-step approval process that takes place where the town manager in conjunction with town staff ensures that the invoices tick and tie with contract terms, making sure the work is performed as expected. And I as treasurer also serve as an approver before the payment goes out. However, what started during COVID and has perhaps been exacerbated with the shift in employment patterns across the nation, there's been significant delays in terms of how we're both receiving invoices in the mail from the United States Postal Service and then subsequently how vendors are receiving their checks, their payments. As a result, if someone could mute, please, they're on the phone. Thank you. As a result, we're not, we're finding we're not as timely when we're paying after the approval process has gone through. So the town staff is actively looking into ways to kind of modernize streamline operations so that we can receive invoices electronically and also pay electronically as much as possible. Definitely will keep you all informed. There's nothing to necessarily worry about, but I just wanted to let you know how sometimes external factors, you know, change the way that we have to do some operations. So that's all I have. Thanks, Mayor.
Okay, good. Thank you very much. Are there any questions for Irene? Todd, is there anything you wish to add?
No, thanks.
Okay, good. No, we are certainly in very, very healthy financial shape. There's no question about that. So thank you. Okay, Todd, turn it over to you for your, your manager's report.
Sure, thanks. I'll, I'll touch on some of the initiatives undertaken by staff over the past month. I will gloss over some because they're going to be discussed at more length tonight, but staff continued to assist with responding to the proposed redevelopment of, of the former 4H property. And they scheduled and attended the June 2nd presentation of the updated redevelopment plan. Also attended a meeting with the State Highway Administration, the county officials to discuss crosswalk safety on the Southwest Highway, Maple Avenue. We actually heard back from the State Highway Administration today on an update on what we had requested or, and they agreed to look into with respect to improvements to crosswalk safety. They include vertical delineation of the crosswalk, which they're still looking into or still assessing or reviewing. We have looked or they've agreed to install in-road pedestrian signage or at least reinstall since we believe, I believe in-road pedestrian signage was there previously. And so they've agreed to reinstall that signage to replace that which has been damaged or removed or destroyed. And they're still discussing and coordinating with another department within the S H A to assess design options for alternatives to the rectangular rapid flashing beacon. They didn't provide a timeline or a indication of when they might get back to us with respect to that assessment. But ostensibly they're looking into other types of systems other than rectangular rapid rectangular flashing beacon, including a hawk signal, which would implement a pedestrian activated red light instead of a flashing yellow light to allow more safe crossings of the, of the crosswalk at that location. We also learned that the Sleepford Underpass and Barney, you're welcome to brief everyone on this, that it will be opening by the fall of this year, which makes the improvements to the crosswalk ever more important to be implemented sooner rather than later. The staff participated in a number of discussions about stormwater management and green infrastructure projects that are going to be undertaken with ARPA funds that will be discussed later this evening. We completed the spring public and private tree plantings. We planted 112 trees on both public and private property.
Right.
We continue to plan for certain events in the town, the July 4th celebration, as well as the July 16th household hazardous waste collection event, which will be advertised in the forecast and by town crier. We launched, launched a new town crier format and which provides automatic updates to some of our social media platforms, including Facebook and Twitter. We introduced, introduced a new audio format for the town forecast newsletter.
I'd like to interject there. I, I think that was a terrific thing to do. The audio is great. Anyone who has difficulty reading with bad eyesight can hear the forecast and it's a very good presentation of it. So thank you for doing that.
Thanks. We're continuing your redesign of the town website and we're hoping that's, that's going, proceeding well and hopefully we'll have a rollout within a few months, I'm hoping. And we've continued administration of the battery power floor and rebate program, an equipment rebate program that, that program ends in, at the end of this month. And to date, we've had 100 and 138 applicants and distributed a close to $22,000 for that program.
You have the video on?
Hold on a second. Sorry. So that concludes my staff report. Barney, I'm happy to answer any questions.
By one, Todd, do you have any update on the progress of the permitting at Zimmerman Park?
I do. Bear with me while I pull it up here. Reached out to Jason Azar and they are, sorry, I had it here and I can't find it now. Here it is. Stormwater management concept is currently under review at the Department of Permitting Services and the comments should come in from DPS around the end of this month. The forest conservation plan exemption should be filed this week. And they're going to look to have 60% design plans by the end of the month. They'll take those, they'll provide them to both the town and Department of Permitting Services for comment. And then roll them into a 90% plan so that they can file the erosion and sediment control permit and the State Highway Administration permit right after concept approval. That next round of permits, the erosion sediment control and S H A permits will probably take about five months to obtain. So we're looking close to the end of the year in order to get the appropriate permits. They'll then take the design final, start developing construction documents with the intention of retaining contractors and making the improvements in spring of next year.
Okay. It sounds like we ought to then have this as an item on our July. Review at that point, 40% concept?
Correct. We could do that.
Okay, good. Thank you. Great. Good. Any other, any other questions or comments for Todd? But you're busy. That's good. Thank you. Okay, with that, it's now time for public comments. Anybody who wishes to speak, please raise their hand. Why don't we start with you then? Please, go ahead, Deborah. What would you like to tell us?
Okay. I'd like to propose that the town council, and I'm not quite sure exactly how this should be set up, but maybe a task force to, to look in into the possibility of finding someplace either within our town or close to our town where there could be a swimming pool facility set up. On the town neighbors list serve lately, we've had several posts from people who are looking for places to swim laps. I know there are other people who have families that want to go swimming. There is the county pool, the Bethesda outdoor pool, which is nice, but sometimes in the summer it gets, it gets to be overcrowded. The first summer of the pandemic, you had to make reservations and, and that was a problem because you couldn't always get in. But, but then, you know, in the subsequent summer, sometimes one would go and it was just, you know, it was getting crowded. And I think now more and more people are going to be going back. Not everybody has a car to get themselves places. Not everybody can afford to join a health club or if they have a health club that, most of the health clubs don't have swimming pools. So I'm thinking of either the 4H property or the park development of the parking lots by the Farm Women's Market that, that the town ought to be looking at one of those two alternatives as possibilities. And I also think there ought to be some sort of a task force set up to coordinate with the town council with residents who are interested in this. Cause I know there, there, there is an interest. It won't, it won't solve the problem for us for this summer. But for summers in the future, it could make a big difference. And I think swimming is such a healthy exercise. And when it's hot, there's really not a whole lot else that it, that is comfortable for people to do for exercise when it's really hot. And the kids need it. So that's my comment.
Thank you very much, Deborah. Appreciate it. I can't see any other faces except the council and a couple of other individuals. So I, and I, I don't know. Todd, can you see everybody else and see who else wishes to speak?
I can, Anne Stooks.
Okay, Anne, please go ahead. Good evening.
Evening. I, I logged in tonight thinking that you all wanted to hear some initial reactions to the June 2nd presentation.
That's absolutely correct. Yeah.
Okay.
Look forward to hearing from you.
And I see another of my neighbors on the line on the screen. I had three initial reactions and, and I think I can preface this by saying, I live on Woodside Place and our neighbors have sent a joint letter to the town council in the past and we may well do that again. It was candidly quite jarring to see the height of the buildings and to see the rendering with the building right at the end of our street. And I understand change is going to come, but we all bought our houses because we were on a dead end street and adjacent to woods and we didn't have a view of a, of a big apartment building is what it looks like, even though I know it's senior housing. So in terms of what we might be able to request from the new owners, could we consider asking for additional tall trees to act as additional screening? And this might not be just Woodside Place who could benefit from this. I think along Meadow Lane and Thorn Apple, they might also enjoy that, but they can speak for themselves, obviously. But additional tall tree evergreen screening, I think would be appreciated. The second thing that I observed was at toward the end of their presentation, they said they were willing to engage in covenants that would run with the land. I, I will say when the 4H announced that they wanted to sell, the number one concern of every resident of Woodside Place was that our street would be open to vehicular traffic. I would love a covenant that they're not going to do that in the future. Especially if they want to change the zoning to some kind of a commercial-esque, it's whatever, commercial residential zoning. That seems like the first step on a slippery slope with it in 20 or 50 years. It could be something else that's even more commercial than the Corso folks want to have it. So could we consider a covenant to prevent vehicular access of Woodside Place to that property? And also it, it seemed like they were open to forest management. And so maybe we could build in covenants of certain setbacks and maintenance of certain treats. I, and I don't have fine details on that, but it seems like a nice thing to ask for in a covenant that might be agreeable. The third thing, and this I, I can speak for myself and I know the opinion of a few of my neighbors. We were not excited to see the sidewalk open. In their first proposal, there was not a sidewalk open from Woodside Place. And there was a concern because there was a pathway running through the woods and that could interrupt the habitat of the animals. But we, I, I was candidly quite relieved not to see a path at the end of Woodside Place, but now it has appeared. So I, I would rather not have a sidewalk open from Woodside Place. For 100 years, this has been a quiet dead end street with no connection to Connecticut Avenue, whether by sidewalk or vehicular traffic. And frankly, it, it's not something I, I would have asked for. So I see my neighbor Beryl, I, I've said my, my three things and, and I think that we can collectively give feedback, maybe in a matter. But thank you for listening.
Good. Thank you very much, Anne. Appreciate it. And we will be talking. I'm sorry, there's a lot of background noise. People should put themselves on mute.
I am trying to put my hand. It doesn't, it doesn't.
It's not you, Beryl. It's somebody else who's speaking who's, who's, who's not been recognized.
Anyway, so my hand doesn't appear, but anyway, I wanted to.
Yes, please, go ahead.
To confirm what Anne just said. It's a safety issue. We, we choose to live in Woodside Place. And, and now all this car being broken, if you open that to Connecticut, it will really, a, a lot of people would be able to come to Woodside. And, and we don't want any, any safety. We want to calm of our street. We both sat in Woodside because it was a dead end. Connecticut is not, we, we don't, and I, I'm not speaking just for me. I spoke with my neighbors. Majority in Woodside do not want that. No connection with Connecticut.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. Okay. Is there anyone else whose hand is up who'd like to make a comment before we go to our friends? Again, I can't see all the faces. So Todd, can you help me out? Is there anybody else whose hand is raised?
I don't see anyone.
Okay, good. All right. Well, thank you both, Beryl and, and Anne, and also Deborah for your comment. Appreciate it. You'll be hearing us talk further about the 4H property, the Corso properties, we should now call it later on this evening if you wish to stay on. With that, I now like to turn to the variance hearing that we need to take up tonight. And Todd, let me turn it over to you to start. And I assume is Talbert's available to be on the call for this?
He should be joining.
Yeah, I'm here. I'm here.
Thank you, Talbert. Good. All right. Good.
Ron, I'm going to turn it to you. Go ahead, Ronnie. You can give the.
Sure. So I'll first go over the procedure for the hearing. The hearing will begin with the presentation of the case by the applicant. The applicant should please be aware that the council has had the opportunity to review the application materials in advance. So don't feel like you have to restate everything that's in the application, but please feel free to address what you'd like. Then the council will ask its questions. After that, there'll be an opportunity for others attending tonight to ask questions of the applicant or make comments. After that, the applicant will be provided a brief opportunity for rebuttal on those issues that came up in the, the questions. After that, the record will close and the council will deliberate and entertain a motion directing me to prepare a written decision, either approving or denying the request. If the request is approved, please note that the decision's not final until it's reduced to writing and that usually takes about a week to 10 days. So this is a request concerning 4216 Oak Ridge Lane. And I see we have one of the applicants here. This is a request for two variances, one related to driveway width in the front yard and in the public right of way. The town code provides that driveway width cannot exceed 10 feet, but 12 feet is proposed. And also a retaining wall is proposed to be along the west side of the driveway and would measure approximately 5.6 feet in height. But the town code allows retaining walls to be only up to two and a half feet tall. So variance is needed for the wall as well. And with that, I will ask that the applicants be unmuted and they may present their case. And then, and if anyone would please just identify yourself for the recording with your name before you speak.
Can I be heard?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Kenny, are you representing the applicants?
Yes, I am.
Thank you.
What we propose is to widen the driveway to 12 feet. Being that these retaining walls are tall, they stop the car doors from actually opening. With the typical width of a car door, a car and its door, only one side would be able to open at a time. So we're asking for the 12 foot width to allow adequate use of the driveway. Part of the issues of this widening of the driveway is the close proximity to a 24 inch Norway spruce that's giving the neighborhood some concern. What we decided to do was to try to assist in this concern. And we changed the design of this wall to include an angle which pulls it further away from the, the Norway spruce. The town arborist has decided that this wall would be okay to remove and replace as we have planned. He stated that he would work with us to make sure that we don't damage anything any further during the construction process. Part of the concern of the neighborhood has been the parking on the street. We don't intend to change any of that. Our construction is going to stop before the driveway apron. We're not going to enlarge the apron. So the amount of parking on the street would actually increase as my client's cars would be now in the driveway. I think that this project would benefit the neighborhood in that it's more aesthetically appealing than what is there now and falling apart. The two sides of the driveway are different from each other. We intend to make them look the same. We do want to save the tree as that is part of the nice part of the neighborhood. My clients will remove the dead tree and do whatever is necessary to ensure the safety of them all. I believe that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kenny. Mr. Mayor, I forgot to mention there have been six letters that have been submitted. They have been shared with the council. There are five letters indicating objection and one letter indicating support, and those are in the record.
Right. Good. Thank you for that. All right, good. Are there any questions that my colleagues would like to ask at this time of the applicant? I don't see anybody's hand. Is that fair? Oh, okay. Joy, please go ahead.
Thank you. Yes, and Mr. Kenny or for the intraters. I notice on the, I'm looking at a Google Maps view of your property and you also submitted photos with your application. And, you know, I think the, the request was to enlarge the driveway closer to the neighbor's side. I was wondering, do the plans also, you know, would you also be encroaching on the other side? I think the other side you would be rebuilding that retaining wall that's, looks like it's kind of crumbling. Would the driveway also widen on that side as well or only encroach it from the tree side?
Our plan is to leave that where it is, that wall placement of the porch itself is, would require some underpinning as the foundation is exposed now. Anything we change on that side makes that porch unstable and we'd rather not have to rebuild it. So we've left that side where it is.
And then also with respect to, I mean, the, I think most of the original garages in this neighborhood are very small. You can barely get a, a small Mini Cooper in one of these garages. I have one, so I know. And so your intention though is, and I think it was mentioned in your application, was to just make it, you know, hospitable for a larger car. Cars of that size, I, I guess weren't in use at the time your house was built.
That is correct. We, we're trying to widen the driveway so that if a husband and wife drove in, in, let's just say a typical car, not even an SUV, your, your Mini Cooper, for example, you'd be able to open both doors and get, have to have one side or the other open up and park leaning over.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Joy. Any other questions from my colleagues? All right. With that, let me open it up to questions and comments from residents. Is there anybody who'd wish to speak at this time?
I would, please?
Yes, please. Go ahead.
Allison Trainer, 4221 Oak Ridge Lane. Our property backs up onto what is now the Purple Line. So we're a little bit sensitive about any threats to any trees in our neighborhood. Because we have, we have felt the, the absence of a lot of trees that are no longer there. So when we're talking about any possible majestic tree being impacted negatively, it just, like, haven't we all suffered enough? You know, we're all, you look at Wisconsin Avenue and the traffic and it's just, it's like a freeway, same on Connecticut. And I think our trees are just so precious. They're, they're the only thing between us and suffocation. So I'm, I'm very sensitive to tree life. And so I, I really just have to question, you know, expand to the other side, to the Connecticut Avenue side rather than to the Wisconsin Avenue side. I don't know what that, I understand that might be a challenge with a porch, but I think that's part of, you know, that's the ballgame. you know, that's the ballgame if you, you know, if that's what you want to do. And I, you know, we have loads of parking on the street, so I just don't know that that's and I understand the, you know, getting in and out at the same time. I just, I think the trade off for me would be I would question that, whether that for the neighborhood. I understand for our neighbors and I think everybody should do exactly what you're doing, which is bringing it to the board and to your neighbors, but I for one would be hard pressed to risk the, that majestic tree. When you can, when you, there is an option for you to expand and allow your both doors to be open at the same time by simply going in the opposite direction. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment. Are there any other comments from any of the neighbors, anybody else on the town? Yet I can't necessarily see everybody.
Mayor Rush, both Bren Lazio and Beth Barnett are also raised.
Great. Okay, good. Bren Lazio, please. Lizzy, please go ahead.
Unmute. Okay. Hi, I'm Bren Lazio and I live next door to 4216 Oak Ridge Lane. I'm at 4218 Oak Ridge Lane. And I'm really opposed to the driveway widening on my side of the driveway. The main reason is that I'm not convinced that the cutting and excavation is, it's, is that it's not going to harm the Norway spruce tree on my property. The tree is plus or minus 80 years old. And you know, I also think the, I mean, if any of the soil surface is covered near the maple tree, it's the, in the right of way, the town's maple tree, then that's going to be harmed. Because the roots need oxygen. When you cover the soil surface, it prevents any oxygen from getting to the roots. And I was wondering if maybe a, like, a tree excavation specialist could give us maybe even more more information. I know that there are air knife tools that can blow air, blow the soil away just to see where the roots are in the back of their existing, of the neighbor's existing retaining wall. But I wanted to share some slides if that would be okay.
Sure, that's fine. I think I received, and I think my colleagues did as well, the set of slides that you had sent before, earlier this afternoon.
Can I share, share the screen?
Yeah, that's fine. Sure.
Let's see. Let's see if this works. Oops.
Right now you, okay.
Can you see?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Okay. So here's, here's looking, looking west on Oak Ridge Lane and the 80 or even older tree on my property. And then here's where the driveways that to the properties are, and there's just a narrow grassy strip. It's a grassy hill between the driveways. The lot width of both of our properties is narrow 50 feet wide. So the houses are narrow too. Everything is small. Here, here are the driveways and the trees between the driveways. And I I didn't, I, I guess I got the tree plan from Talbert yesterday, but I had already done this, this chart. It just shows the three trees and this is the, the Norway spruce is the tree that I'm really most concerned about. And you can see, it's this here, it's covered by the maple, I mean, the azalea, so you can't see the base of the tree. And the top 12 inches or maybe two feet of the surface of most trees is where the, the, the roots that it's really the important part that you really don't want to cut away because the roots take the nutrients and water up to the tree. Then here's let's see. Okay, so here, so the roots will go wherever they can and the critical tree, the critical root zone is also known as the, the root protection zone. And to determine it, you take the, you measure the trunk diameter in inches at the breast, at breast height or the DBH and measure the and, and that at breast height is four and a half feet above grade and multiply that by 12. So there's only, here's, there's only not much space because the roots aren't going to go farther than seven feet to the right and less, make less than seven feet to the left. The property line is right. The tree is really right on the property line, but all on my property. And yeah, so I was, if you look at this L shaped existing retaining wall that will be replaced, it's, it'll be moved. It's hard to see from here, but it'll be moved and cut that all the tree, the tree roots will grow where they want to grow. And so the tree roots are, you know, the wall is holding the tree roots. The wall is, is bending over because of the tree roots probably. Probably. I mean, I don't know. No, no one knows until we, we can X-ray underneath the soil. But anyway, the here you can see the distance that this retaining wall on the driveway side is about one third of the length of the driveway that, the part of the driveway that's inside the property, not in the right of way. It's about a third of the 25 feet. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Bren. Appreciate it.
Sure.
Okay. Beth Barnett, I see your hand is up.
I have a question, a clarification question. The the speaker said that they were, have they, that they were not going to take away any of the the parking area. Does that mean that they're going to do not increase the apron? They're going to stay with, within the 10 foot limit?
If that's a question, let's wait till, let's let the, any other questions from the, from the residents and then what, then the applicants will be, have an opportunity to answer that question.
Okay.
So that's, well, this is the question's noted. Okay, thank you. Are there any, is there anybody else who wishes to speak? I don't see any other hands, so. Okay. If I'm correct, Ron, at this point, it goes back to the applicant.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Alan, yeah, could you please respond, and particularly to the last question just asked about the apron? And if there's anything else you wish to say about the, the tree roots that were raised by Bren Lazio?
Yes, I would. In response to the last question, we are not touching the curb at all on the project. The driveway apron will remain. The four foot panel behind the apron will, will enlarge a little bit, but nothing that touches the street will be enlarged. In regards to the tree root, we have turned around and placed that wall on more of an angle. And which pulls us further away from the tree, which is actually not next to the wall, but further closer to the back and to the side. The arborist has noted what tree roots are there. And at the depth we're going, we should really not see too many roots. He notes that they go towards the neighbor's house and not so much towards the front where we're going. With today's practices and working hand in hand with this arborist, our goal is not to damage that tree. We didn't ask the town to remove the tree. We want to save it and we will do what is necessary to save that tree. We did look at moving the wall over to the left over into the property line, but that whole brick porch, which is an original porch, would need some real serious underpinning as well as the basement that is there would need the underpinning. And that made the project really not viable. So we did devote a lot of effort into try to save that big Norway spruce there. And I really believe we have it, especially working with the towns arborists. I hope that's, that's it. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. With that, we now turn it back to the council for deliberation. And let me open it to my.
Mayor Rush, I'm sorry. Bren has her hand up again, but I'm not sure about the protocol or the.
Well, the protocol normally is not to go back, but is there something, I'll, Bren, if you have something that's brand new to say, I'll let you raise it.
I'm so sorry. I forgot to ask or propose. Let's see, that a oh gosh. I can't find it. I, you know, what, what proof is there that the tree won't die in five years? And how can I be assured that it won't die? I, you know, what about a bond to, like, if it, if it dies within five years? How, then I would be responsible. I would have to pay to remove the tree and to replant another tree. Should that be on me? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let me turn it back to my colleagues for further discussion and their thoughts. But I would like, if I could, if I could make, use my my role here, I think I'd be grateful if Talbert, you could speak. Talbert, you're the town arborist and you've looked carefully at this plan. I'd be grateful if you could give us an overview of the trees and, and summary of your report and your view, your view about the potential damage arising from this project to the trees.
Okay, thank you, Barney. The looking at the site, first of all, the, the wall, the existing wall is gonna, I mean, that wall is going to need to be replaced in, in, in some kind anyway.
Just to be clear, Talbert, which, which wall are you talking about?
The, the wall that they're going to demolish, the, the white wall against the garage.
Yep, okay. The one that's L shaped right now.
Yes.
Okay.
So so something's, I mean, something's going to have to happen in that area, whether they widen the driveway or not. And looking at the, at the base of the tree, there's no, and spruce trees are usually, if anybody has a spruce tree at their house, they know that the roots are pretty much on the surface. There's a lot of surface, large surface roots right around the crown of the tree. And I didn't, I don't see any large surface roots going towards the wall. The L shaped wall or they, or in fact, the, the house at 4216, that wall. And then, of course, those roots are probably in both backyards for the tree. And they, I mean, they grow where they, where they, where they can flourish. I, I don't suspect we'll find where they're going to dig back to do the footing, they need to dig back two to three feet. So what I envision doing with them or watching them do is they can, they can tear down the L shaped wall and then start digging by hand with me there. And any exposed roots, we would preserve. We're mainly interested in preserving roots that are two inches or more in diameter. Those are the most important roots, both structurally and for the tree itself. And then even wrapping, maybe wrapping the roots in, if there are any of that size, wrapping them in burlap and keeping them moist during the day while the work's going on. So that's what I envisioned for that. The other thing I might remind everybody is when you transplant a tree, you're cutting 90% of the roots off if it's a bald and burlap tree. And, and all of these trees recover. And they recover because roots are probably the fastest thing on a tree that regenerate. And that makes it easier for tree protection also, because as long as you're not cutting as long as you're not cutting very close to the crown, like within a foot or two, or as long as you're not cutting, say, 50% of the, of the say, if you draw a semi circle around that end of the tree, as long as you're not cutting into much of that that semi circle, say, 25, this is probably less than 25%. And also that, I mean, the tree, if, this would be different if there were no wall there and the tree were growing into a bank. You couldn't do this at all. You couldn't excavate there. But since the wall's there, the tree, the roots have stopped at the wall. If there are any roots there. And that's what makes it easy to carefully take the wall and the dirt out and preserve the roots. And, and then the roots regenerate once it's backfilled. Probably throughout the summer and, and into the fall, if this project's done, you know, within a month or two. So I'm not, I, I mean, I, I'm pretty confident this can be done without harming the tree.
What about the Japanese maple?
The Japanese maple is on, on that in that area, the, the the, the amount they have to dig back is less because the footing becomes smaller because there's less of a wall to support. So those, those are, that wall's far enough away from both the dogwood and the Japanese maple that the the Japanese maple shouldn't be harmed.
Okay, let me turn to my colleagues. Rich, I think I saw your hand go up first.
Yeah, thank you. I wanted to ask Talbert another question. What is the normal life expectancy of the Norway spruce?
I mean, they can, they can last, you know, hundreds, hundreds of years. So I mean, this one's probably she, she's right. It's, it's probably anywhere in the range from 80 to 90 years old. Most of the trees in town are 100, 110 because all of this area was forested for material and, and fuel, you know, during the 17 and 1800s. So there's really no old growth forest anywhere in, in our area. So, but I mean, they can, it can live, it's going to live more than five years. Let's put it that way.
Thank you.
Joel?
Great. Thanks, Barney. Thank you for the, the presentation and also for the neighbors and all of your, your engagement and, and letters submitted as well. I'm really intrigued by Talbert's assessment. I was waiting to hear it, so I'm glad that you asked Mayor Rush for his assessment of it, because that has a big impact on my, my thinking on this. And I'm also intrigued by Bren's point about if there's some way to obtain prospective commitment by the homeowner so that in the event of, if this were to go forward, in the event of the tree failing, that there would be an effort made to, to plant a new tree or, or take up some kind of mitigating measure at their expense as well. So I like that idea because when looking at the, at the spot, it's clear that something is gonna, there, there's a need for some construction. The homeowner has a legitimate reason or a cause for concern for the widening. And that's not in dispute from my perspective. So it really does come down to protecting this tree. So, so I'm leaning on the idea on the so I, I'm leaning on the idea, on the, 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 the side of supporting this, but ensuring that to get, get my support, that we have some kind of firm commitment that ensures the, the, the burden related to any, any damage to the tree fully beyond the homeowner and that they commit to some type of mitigation down the road if there's a need for it.
Great, thank you. Irene, please.
Thank you, Mayor Rush. My question for Tolbert is, you mentioned how the roots of the, of the Norway spruce are kind of being blocked by the, the wall. In your estimation, is, is it possible that the root structure is contributing to the failing of that wall?
Usually walls fail because of water, not because of roots.
Right. So, okay.
And, and for a wall to be really affected by a tree, actually, the tree would affect the garage wall on the other side more quickly than the wall on forty-two sixteen, just because if, if the tree crown is closer to a wall, then you can get some type of physical pushing. But usually roots, there's a lot of water on the wall too, you know, like on the side of the wall draining down. And roots don't grow in water because there's no oxygen. So that kind of prevents them from, from growing against the wall. So
So given, I'm sorry, didn't mean
They can grow up to the wall, but usually they don't grow, you know, touch the wall.
So given the stormwater management issues on that property, do you think that not doing anything at all affects the health of the Norway spruce?
Oh, you mean?
Maintaining the status quo.
Yeah, I mean, maintaining status quo.
Would that, because of the stormwater management issues, do you feel that that
Yeah, I mean, you know, we're losing a lot of trees now, we think, because of stormwater, just because of the amounts we have now that have changed. I think over the past four or five years, at, at least that's my impression. And there's quite a few trees. Barney had a tree in his house that collapsed suddenly, what, two years ago? And we think that was from, it's the abundance of water. We have two thousand eighteen, there was the most rain Maryland had ever recorded and since then we, I mean, the, the storm last Thursday was frightening to me. It lasted fifteen or twenty minutes and Leland was a, a river. So
Right, I'm talking about this particular situation that you've already stated and that there are stormwater management issues. The, the wall that is causing an issue with the structural integrity of the wall, you don't feel that the roots are impacting that wall, but I'm asking the reverse question. If nothing is done, is that tree going to be impacted negatively because of the intense storms we are getting?
It's hard for me to say one way or the other on that.
My last question is, you are surmising that once the hand digging takes place, that they'll, that the roots themselves of, of a particular diameter or larger can be protected through burlap and things like that. What, what conditions would surprise you or would make you rethink that, oof, I, I'm, I'm not sure, we have to, we're in a situation here where the, there, where the roots are different than what I anticipated and therefore something needs to be, like what's gonna, what's gonna make you pause?
I mean, if there was, if, if, if there was a massive roots, the shape of the wall, do you understand what I'm saying? Like if there was roots, the shape of the L shape of the wall, that would surprise me. And then that would be, that would be more difficult to deal with. Of course, once you have the wall down, you have to replace the wall. So, but I, you know, I, there's no, the surface, there's no surface roots that indicate there's that type of rooting against that wall.
Okay, thank you.
Rich?
Yeah, I, I have another question for Tolbert. And looking at the existing tree, it's awfully close to, to Bren's house. If it were to fail and we, as part of the town tree planning program, would you ever put a tree back there?
No. This is the, not, not a tree that grows of any size. That's probably a volunteer, I guess.
Yeah, thank you.
Joel? Your hand's still up. I didn't know whether you
Sorry, lower hand, yep.
Okay. Joy, do you have any comments?
Yes, thank you. I, I guess my only other question is, you know, I've just, I've asked a couple of times about the you know, the other side of the house. And, you know, take note of the comments from Mr. Kenny that there's an issue on that side in terms of support that that wall, I guess, is giving to the porch and maybe the rest of the structural area of the house, but, you know, I I would just ask, again, if you're trying, like, it's unlikely that they're gonna be able to get a car in that, a car of the size that they're referencing in that garage. But I'm, you know, again, I would ask, you know, what other kind of investigation was done to widen, if not the whole driveway, at least a part of the driveway on, on the other side to avoid disturbing the trees. But then again, also, you know, I do have a question and I, I think Tolbert already covered that, that it looks like that the wall on the right side of their property is, you know, structurally weak, maybe due to water or, or something else, in which case, you know, does that imply that it would need to be replaced regardless of whether they wanted to widen the driveway or not?
Oh, I'd, Mr. Kenny, respond to the questions?
Yes, first I'd like to say that my client is not gonna be parking in the garage. It too is not large enough. One of the things that I checked when I went on site is the viability of moving that left side wall without doing any kind of excavation or anything. The erosion that has happened on that property has already exposed a good portion of that foundation wall. And the foundation of both the porch and the garage wall really raise a concern as to the stability. What we wanna do is use this new wall to help shore up that existing porch. And then we're gonna try and make some small repairs to the garage wall to sturdy that up as well. They will be, without having to remove anything, we can mortar up the joints. That right side existing wall is failing due to its construction method. It was constructed out of brick and mortar with no rebar. And yes, once that water sits there, it becomes static and pushes up on it and breaks the mortar joints and we have wall failure. That can happen in the garage as well as it's the same type of construction. We went into a further discussion about moving that left-hand wall and it really became a, a question of safety on the rest of the house. That's why we decided not to do that. I, I hope that answered your question.
Thank you, Alan, appreciate it. Joy, is there anything else that you wish to mention?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I have a few thoughts I'd like to offer my colleagues and the, first of all, I feel that, appreciate the fact that they're not wishing to enlarge the apron right to the street. I also am very sympathetic to wanting to be in a driveway where people can open doors to get out of cars. And, and I realize there are a lot of homes in town that, that may be very much like Alan Kenny's home. But, you know, if, if, if there's a desire there to see and have enough room to really open the door, I find that to be an exceptional circumstance and it warrants us to take that seriously. I'll say in my own case, where we put in a drive, I carefully measured out how much space is needed if you're in a drive and need to open the doors and indeed you need more than eight feet, need more than ten feet. So, so I'm, I'm sympathetic to that request. I also went into this evening having the same questions that others have asked about why more couldn't be done on what I guess, Alan, you call the left wall, but I guess I would call it the, the east wall, that, that, that your, your point, that that's really moving that would jeopardize the stability of the, of the area under the porch and part of the garage and, or part of the basement. And I, I accept that answer and I don't think that we should be imposing requirements here that, that would be costing, of grave concern to the stability of the house. I guess where I still have some question, and actually this is partly elicited from Tolbert, your comments about doing the hand digging. In all candor, that, that comes across to me that there is some potential doubt about just where these roots actually go. And, and I guess the question I have that arises from that is, is it necessary really to excavate out? And I appreciate Alan, your offer, your statement that you've revised the original plans so that you show, show a diagonal. And I'm, I'm, I'm wondering whether Todd, you can put up the, the, the drawing that shows the composite of the current existing wall with the proposed wall. Is that possible? If we do that?
Sure, I can see if I can bring it up quickly. I have it here.
Okay, exactly. Okay, good. Thank you for doing that. So what I see is sort of an area that is going to be taken out. And of course, I don't have control of the cursor, but it's, it's inside of the L. Right, exactly, right there. Okay. So that's essentially the area that we're talking about. I don't believe that I've heard any concerns that are material for any of the area between that red line, which is where the right angle of the current wall sits and going out to the street. So I'm trying to kind of find, if you will, the common ground of what, you know, seems to be pretty straightforward and, and gives the twelve feet that you're looking for, Mr. Kenny. But I guess what I'm wondering is whether it's not possible to skinny down further, the diagonal that you've created there and, and potentially we, you know, pull, pull that, pull that, pull that diagonal back more, if you will, so that there is less prospect that some roots could be disturbed as you undertake the project. And I, perhaps that's an abundance of caution, but I guess Tolbert, in talking about hand digging, I really just, I, I guess it almost begs the question, if you did see roots, what would we do? And, and would there be a, you know, a, a need for a plan B to accommodate that? I don't know if you wanna speak to that or not.
No, I think it, first of all, you're not really digging because it's gonna be vertical. I mean, you're, what you're working on is a vertical soil profile.
Right, understood.
You're actually kind of, you know, crumbling off soil off this vertical profile. So it's easy to get roots out if they're there without damaging, because you're not cutting anything, you're not
I'm sorry, when you say roots, but supposing you find roots, what do you then do? You bend them back or you keep on digging around?
You, you, you keep them, well, we'll, we'll need to assess that. They're, they're, they're flexible. You can, when we backfill, we can, we can adjust them and move them around.
In other words, you would bend the root back so that it would fit behind the new wall that's built?
Yes.
Okay. Rich, I see your hand has gone back up.
Let me say Barney, the root's not close to the crown. I mean, the roots, if the root were right up next to the crown of the tree, the base of the trunk, you'd have trouble doing that. But this is well out from the tree. So there's a lot of flexibility there you can do.
Okay, Rich?
Yeah, there's another question for Tolbert. I mean, that, that existing versus proposed graphic really highlighted to me the, the area that could be disturbed. My question is, is that even if there were significant roots in that area, it appears to me that that is not a significant, you know, it's probably what, two, now, I don't know what percentage of, of the root system of that tree, even if it was completely even, the root system was completely even. If you lost that amount of root in that area, do you think it would kill the tree?
No, no, it's, I have to see what roots are there, but I mean, it's a small percentage of the root structure. That's why if there's a wall there, then you know the roots are, that's, I mean, the roots aren't growing beyond the wall. So, so it limits the amount of, of, I mean, it's, it's a small portion of the entire root system, yes.
Let me, let me ask a follow-up on this. Could you go back and put up the diagram, Todd, and then try to let trust before, I guess, try to ask Tolbert to put, actually mark where the tree is on that diagram.
Let's see. Tree, let me see, I can, I can get Todd to put the pointer there. I have it on here.
I mean, it's further back. I, I see where the cursor
Okay, Todd, you see where that says property, P R O P, up on, up, up, yeah, right there. The way I, I measured this actually in the field, the tree sits between the P and the, or it's, it's, it starts about where the P is on property.
It might help to pull up the estimated drip line diagram that Tolbert prepared.
Either that or you can pull up the actual tree protection plan. That shows exactly where it is.
Okay, so they didn't also, that, that didn't also show the diagram that we just had, so I was trying to combine
But you get, you can, I mean, you can visualize the diagram by just drawing the L from the end of the garage wall. So it'd be the tree, yeah, a little more. That, that it. Okay, it's here. That, yes. So the, the wall that you had drawn in red before.
Yeah, I see where, I know where that would be, okay.
Yeah, so you can see the tree is, is up and over from that L.
Right, okay. All right, thank you. Okay, are there any other, any other comments from my colleagues before we move to make a decision here? All right. I'll entertain any motion at this time to approve the variance or approve it with any amendments or whatever someone would wish to propose. Rich?
I move to approve the variance.
Okay, is there a second?
Uh, uh, wait, 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 I was trying to get in there. I wanted to propose an amendment.
Well, we have to have two, two votes to put, we have to have a second in order to actually then consider amendments.
Well, not necessarily, right? Don't we have to have, if, if there's an amendment to be approved, we can approve whether or not to do the amendment? And then after that, the base of approving, because if we approve, I might be all confused.
I'm, I'm not approving it. It was just a matter of seconding Rich's amendment so we can then have the discussion and take on a second Rich's motion, so then we can have, entertain amendments to the motion.
Yep, I jumped the gun. Yep.
Okay.
I second that.
Thank you, okay. Now, now we're open for discussion of the, of the variance of the, to, of the motion to approve the variance and are open to consideration of amendments.
Okay, no, thank you. Sorry about that. Thank you. Okay, no, thank you. Sorry about that. Thank you. Yeah, no, I, I'd like to offer an amendment to, um, to require the homeowner to be responsible for all financial costs related to tree removal and reforest, replanting of the tree if in the worst case scenario, this tree, i- if we pass the variance and if the, the tree dies in, as a result of this, this work.
Okay, is there a second to that amendment? Rich?
Well, I, can we discuss it?
I think, do we have to have a second first before we discuss it? Ron, I'm looking to you as our parliamentarian here.
So if it's not considered a friendly amendment, then you would need a second before the discussion.
I guess I'll consider a friendly amendment to.
Well, it's got to be friendly to the movement, to the movement. So it was Rich's motion. So, Rich, do you find that amendment friendly? Or if not, then we have to have a second to that amendment and then there can be discussion.
No, I don't consider that to be friendly.
All right, so that, that motion needs a second then.
Is there a second to Joel's motion? I don't see one. So that motion fails. Are there any other, any other discussion of the main, of the main motion? Please, Irene, go ahead.
Uh, another amendment possibility is Barney, what you initially thought where the L, what consists now of the L portion of the wall, that that would be replaced as it currently sits. And that way, instead of the entire driveway being widened as, as proposed to 12 feet, it would be a, if you will, smaller part of the driveway that would be expanded. So enough to fit a car, enough to open the doors of that car, but it wouldn't go all the way up to the, what is now the present garage. And the reason I'm making this amendment is so that the, we, there would be even less possibility of the root structure being negatively impacted. All you're doing is replacing what is the L wall with another L. And effectively, the expansion of that driveway from 10 to 12 feet would occur for, towards the street, if you will, a little bit more. I hope that makes sense.
Okay. Rich, do you consider that a friendly amendment or not?
I think that would substantially change this variance. So I, I don't consider that friendly either.
Okay, is there a second for Irene's proposed amendment? Okay, Joy has offered a second. So now we can have a discussion of that amendment. I, I guess my own, oh, wait, I first ask if there are some other comments from colleagues before I speak. Joel, Rich, do you want to say anything?
Um, go ahead and make your comment. I'll, I'll follow you.
Okay, well, I guess I, I don't know quite how this would work as an, as a, you know, in terms of process. So I don't know whether this gets too complicated or not, but I, I take your point, Tolbert, that you'll be there and you'll be taking down the wall and seeing what's behind there. I guess I would, and I don't know how this gets reduced to wording, but I would like to know that, that essentially something like the motion that the amendment that Irene has offered is Plan B. In other words, if they take down and it's clear that there are not roots there, then I don't have any problem and they're doing the design as it's currently planned. If they start taking down the earth and they see that there are significant roots there, I'm much, I'm much more comfortable with their basically, you know, not trying to bend all the roots around, but, but just backfill it and, and, and go to the, the modified plan that Irene just made. So I don't know if there's room to consider that kind of flexibility and execution, but I, that's kind of my thinking about it.
You want me to comment now?
Sure, you can comment. Yeah.
Well, I, I just don't think there's enough area there, even if there were roots for anything to happen to that tree. So, you know, asking these people to, to go through a redesign, obviously, an L is, is going to be more expensive. It's going to be more material than a diagonal. So I, I just, I don't see the need for that modification. Tolbert said he doesn't think it's going to, the existing plan is going to, to harm the tree. They're going to take, he's going to take efforts to, to make sure that during excavation that it's taken care of. So I, I, I just don't see having to put the homeowner through, through an additional expense when it appears, and I trust Tolbert's advice that it's, that this is not going to harm the tree.
Okay, thank you. Joy?
Yeah, I haven't, I, I'm just, I have a question about how this would work in actual practice from a permitting standpoint, and maybe Todd can weigh in on that. Have we ever had cases in the past where, you know, we had either approved a variance or we granted a permit for a particular, you know, for a particular building project? And then realize that, you know, as drawn, it's not going to work. And then what, what happens in that case?
Ron, can you take that?
Sure. Yeah, I, I don't recall an example of, of that occurring in the past. It would be somewhat problematic because generally speaking, you know, the council is making findings of fact as to whether or not an application can be approved and you're, you're making findings of fact as to, you know, whether the specific plans proposed are possible. Now, it, it could be that you could have a condition that, you know, should hidden circumstances be discovered that, you know, make the plan no longer possible, that it shall be amended, and then you, you could be making findings of fact as to how the Plan B or the alternative plan would be possible. I don't think it's been done before, but I think it's possible in a nutshell.
Yeah, I guess that, you know, that, that's my only question that if, you know, if we were to approve the variance as the plans are currently drawn, and then it turns out it's not possible due to whatever root structure happens to be there, what would we do in that case? Because we would have already approved a variance which conveys with the property. I'm, I'm just, I'm trying to avoid that case while still allowing the homeowner some relief.
Right, yeah. So I, I do think it's, it's possible. It would probably be advisable to hear from the, the builder as to whether, you know, the, the Plan B would be feasible. And I, based on Tolbert's testimony, it sounds like Plan B would only be necessary in extreme unforeseen circumstances, such that there was a mass of, of roots right up against the wall, which.
Irene?
Thank you. Yeah, as you were talking, Mayor Rush, about, you know, finding significant root structure, then we'd have to define legally what significant means, which can be open to interpretation. So I, I personally am not in favor of the A, if A, then B approach, because I think it just makes things more muddled. Rather than just making a decision for, you know, what's, in, in my case, what's the, the best option that keeps that tree living for as long as possible and also creates a situation where it's a usable driveway along with creating or, or, or reinforcing, strengthening the, the structural integrity of both walls.
Okay, thank you. Joel?
I mean, I'm finding it very hard to micromanage this from the town council seat. At a certain point, I have to just defer to the experts on this. And Tolbert's our town expert, you know, par excellence. And I just, I think, I think at a certain point, we have to trust the judgment of our town arborist. I'm certainly not an arborist. But I do think it's appropriate to have a trigger potentially, which is why I proposed the other amendment, which is to say, if thing go, if things go awry, there will be a remedy. But that we, we, we have confidence that the arborist is recommending that it's not going to go awry. So that's, that's just, um, any, any kind of micromanaging around the issues, I think, could be, there are unintended consequences that we'd have to study further before we actually prove anything of that nature. So I wouldn't want us to take a vote on the final passage if we agree that there is some type of different amendment in the physical structure. I think we'd have to go back and ask for assessment of what that impact would be from, from the town staff.
Right.
As a point of order, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lane, Councilmember Lane's motion was seconded. And we, we did not have a vote on the mayor's amendment to Councilmember Lane's motion. So we should probably do that, assuming it's, it's not friendly.
Right, no, I, I wasn't really, I was exploring options. I wasn't making a formal amendment. So we're still in discussion mode. I think Joel has made a good point. First of all, I do want to say in all of our discussion here, I, I don't want it to be unsaid here. I also have a very high regard for Tolbert's work and his analysis. So I'm, I, I, you know, when he says he feel, believes that there's very low risk, I, I accept that. I also just think we don't know that there's zero risk. And I think he's been very open and clear about how he would manage it, which is being very careful and being present when they take down the wall and taking a look. But that's what gives rise to the question of, well, what do you do if it turns out that to everyone's surprise, there are some significant roots there and it is difficult to manage. So that, I think that's the, that's what I've been tumbling about and where I find myself having some difficulty. I take, I mean, your point about, you know, a, you know, that I can not having it muddled. But I, but I also still feel that, given Tolbert's recommendation, the chances are there's no problem and it's a shame for the homeowner not be able to be able to enjoy the property as he, as the family would wish to, to be able to, against a hypothetical, which may not be a problem at all. So that's, that's where I think it's, it's difficult for us to, 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 to work. I guess I would like to offer something and I, I don't mean to kick the can down the road, but maybe this is what this sounds like. I think Alan, you've, you've probably heard extensively our different comments and concerns. And Tolbert, you have as well. And I, I'm wondering whether, if you had another month, if you wouldn't mind, I'm just throwing this out as a thought, to do some further work and see if there are any either revisions or alternatively, how you would actually go about managing the, and what condition we could put into a variance that would be clear in the event that you did find roots that were of concern as you took down the, the current wall. I, I think we need to have an understanding, at least I feel that way. I grant that it's low risk and I understand that you feel that it can be managed, but I guess I'd like to have a better idea of how that would be managed. Because I'm certainly hearing everybody, including you, Alan, say that this tree is very important and we all want to see it maintained. So I'm, I'm just wondering whether that's not something you'd consider doing. I see your hand is up, so please be happy to hear your thoughts.
Hello, thank you very much. We have stated we would work hand in hand with Tolbert on this. I agree with Tolbert on the, the root layout that is there. I, I really don't think we're going to do any kind of damage to the tree. Waiting to read this, to reassess this, it's probably going to give us the same opinion as far as the roots go. It might give us a different design on the wall. But that's about all. We still would be working with Tolbert on, on mitigating any damages to, to this property. So I don't think waiting for 30 days is really going to make much of a change. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. We're back with, with where we are in our process here, which was a, two people who favored Irene Lane's amendment that we approved the variance, but with the modification requiring that the, basically the existing wall be rebuilt in, in situ. And then the 12 feet driveway would extend from there down to the street. So let me ask if there's, we ought to take a vote on that. All in favor of that amendment to the main motion? Okay, I see two votes. All right, that motion fails. So we're back to the main motion. The, I guess what I would like to offer as an amendment to the main motion is that we have a commitment that as part of the tree management plan, Dr. Feather will be present when the wall comes down. And that if Dr. Feather observes a major circumstance that he finds to be of concern, that the work will be stopped and the homeowner will come back to the council to assess what alternatives should be put in place. I don't know quite how that should be worded, but it does essentially preserve the prospect that if there is any concern, there has to be a stop and consideration, not just a continuation. Rich?
I consider that to be a friendly amendment.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor of that amendment?
I.
I, Rich, okay, four, all right. All right. And so with that amendment, we now go to the main motion, which is to approve the variance with the amendment that requires Dr. Feather's presence and consultation and would issue a stop order if he sees a concern and cause some redesign as could be necessary. All in favor?
I.
I?
I.
I think I see four. Okay, four in favor, one opposed. Or Irene, are you abstaining or opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed, okay. All right, I think that's where we stand. All right, thank you all very much who are involved in this. And I see there are a lot of people on the call who've sat through all this and certainly it's taken us a while, but I, first of all, I want to say I respect very much the comments that have been made by others, particularly Brent, and you're taking the time to show us the pictures. We, and, and we certainly understand the, and anybody who is from outside the town who might have been observing this would fully understand how much this town cares about the tree canopy and wanting to make sure that we do not make mistakes in how we handle the, the, the urban forest that we have and treasure. So, thank you. All right. We need to take a short break before we come back and take up the discussion items. What, or do people just want to move on? What's the preference?
Maybe just like two minutes.
Yep, that sounds good. Happy to do that. Okay, thank you all. We'll be right back. Okay, we're all here. Good, thank you all. Appreciate the short break. Let us now turn to the various discussion items we have tonight, starting with the Corso redevelopment. And I'd like, if I might, to start off with Ken Rubin, who I see is, is, is on the tending to give us an update as co-chair of the, of the, well, used to be called the 4H committee, but I guess we ought to probably rechristen it and call it the Corso Committee or something like that. And I'll also do a shout out to Chris Brew, who is currently working his way through a case of COVID. But both was able to attend and participate in the committee meeting of Monday and is here tonight, I see on the screen as well. So thank you, Chris. Notwithstanding your, your feelings of illness, I appreciate it. Ken, please go ahead and give us a quick summary, if you might, of the, the meeting of the views of the committee. And then I'm going to ask my colleagues to talk, comment, and then talk about the next step. So please proceed.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Rush. As the mayor said, we met on Monday as a committee, co-chair Chris Brew, myself, Sarah Smith, Joe Rubin, and Rod Hinder, and to consider the presentation by the Corso Development Team. And I'll give you just a high level overview and we'll follow up with a formal letter with much more detail tomorrow with our recommendations to the council. We pulled that together today.
Great, thank you.
We, as a committee, we're, we're grateful that Corso, by and large, listened to our resident neighbors. We were happy that they took into account some of the items in the town's letter requesting. letter requesting a wide range of considerations. But at the same time, we noted that many of the things that were asked were only partially addressed in the presentation or they were addressed in ways that didn't give us strong confidence that the town will have a meaningful or timely input to Corso's plans, or in some cases, they didn't address our request in the letter at all. And accordingly, we documented those things and I have to particularly commend Sarah Smith for pulling this together in a very quick and well-composed letter that I hope you'll agree when you get it. Sarah worked really hard on this and it's the first time I think I've seen anything go through this committee with no changes, so thank you, Sarah. You know, fundamentally, there are two concerns that we address. One is that we need to communicate back to Corso that there's information that we need in order to be a good partner in the zoning map amendment proposal. And we would like to get a whole range of items that we actually asked for and we believe are critical to our input. And we're going to be unable to participate meaningfully in the zoning map amendment process until we see a fair amount more information. And there's an issue broadly around the timing that they propose. We feel very strongly that there are many items that need to be committed. They need to commit to in a binding way. And we need to work out exactly how that gets done so that we can affect the nature, the content of the zoning map amendment application and not enter into binding elements after that application has been approved, assuming it will be approved. And it's your pleasure, I can go into some of the detail of the items we'd like to request, if you'd like, or I can leave that for...
No, why don't you give us a few, why don't you give us some highlights of that, that'd be helpful for our discussion.
Okay, well, we were particularly concerned about, as some of the residents have already mentioned, the apparent density, building heights, the setbacks of the proposed development, especially in relation to what's there now. We asked for a 3D model, we did not get that. We believe they have, may have misunderstood what we asked for, but that they have what we need. We need a much more simple digital massing model that shows roof slopes and setbacks and doesn't need to be complete with regard to materials or windows and other details, architectural details, which they highlighted as an excuse, a reason why they couldn't provide it to us, but they missed that point. So we need to reinforce the need to see that 3D model. Secondly, we will need to see a dimension site plan with the proposed building footprints. Again, showing heights, stories, and distances to property lines. We did see some cross-sections, but the way they were depicted were not as helpful as other ways that typically at this stage in a development, architects and planners might show those cross-sections. Specifically, we'd love to see the the heights in relation to the existing, the buildings, the heights of the existing buildings, they did not show that. And we didn't see a silhouette along Connecticut Avenue facing west, and we'd love to see that as well. We still don't know the gross square footage tabulated by building. We have no real knowledge of densities, although from the drawings, the appearance is much denser than anybody anticipated. There was a lot of vagueness around the Site 1, I'm sorry, the Phase 1 and the Phase 2 planning process and what was included in Phase 1 and Phase 2 and how much time would elapse between the end of Phase 1 and the beginning of Phase 2. We would like to see a lot more of those details. We are concerned about the landscaping, as some of the residents have already commented. Again, those responses were in the right direction, directionally, they were comforting, but the detail wasn't there. So these are items that we believe should be committed to before we engage with any kind of endorsement or not of the zoning map amendment. In particular, the soil depths, which would allow the planting of large trees as opposed to smaller landscaping design. There are matters of leasehold obligations to the town right now, what happens during construction, that was not addressed. And precisely what the town would be receiving for town vehicles following the completion of construction. And that raises the second point, the second major point, which is the timing of all of this. The proposal was to share a draft zoning map amendment proposal sometime after the next two weeks and submit it formally in August. We would be unable to comment meaningfully in that timeframe and we believe it's in the town's best interest to ask for an extension for the formal submittal until least late October 2022, to give us time to fully consider all of this information that we simply don't have yet, as well as the process, which we believe is very vague right now and not necessarily in the town's favor, the way it was articulated. And then finally, we would recommend that the town council initiate, or staff initiate a series of meetings with the Montgomery County Planning Office to start to express some of our concerns around things like density, building heights, setbacks, and potentially access if that changes. So those are the highlights that you'll see in our letter.
Great, thank you very much, Ken, and thank you, and thank you, Sarah, for doing all the work in a draft letter that we'll see so quickly, so we appreciate all of that, very good. Let me not turn to my colleagues and get, and what I'd like to do, if I might, is get some quick, or not quick, but get your thoughts about not only what Ken said, but what you thought and felt having seen the presentation, because we were all there on June 2nd. And then I think we need to close out our discussion tonight with a discussion of next steps and process that we want to take in the near future to make sure we keep the ball rolling in terms of the work that has to be done for this project. Well, Phil, Joel, please go ahead.
Well, I was going to ask kind of a question, but appreciate since you want to get some additional reactions. I don't have my comprehensive set of notes here, but there are a couple of things did stand out from the presentation. And then Ken, want to ask you one quick thing. First of all, thank you again to the committee for your work on this and for staying on top of it, on all the details and tracking it, because it's a lot. I'll just say my initial instinct was, wow, those buildings are significantly, significant, large structures. And it is, it is it is something to see it in real form as their their schematics demonstrated, which is great that we saw it, and that is a lot. So as we continue to chart this, I think we have to make sure we're charting this path with as much empathy as we can possibly have towards the near neighbors and the residents who are going to see a major structure going up in their backyard, so that was very stark. The second thing is, I know I've been, not me alone, but I've been interested in engaging this question of integration with the town and appreciated their suggestion about linking up some of the sidewalks, I like that as well. I do concur with Ken's point about the vagueness of it. I, how do I put this, I think for presentations going forward, we need to get real brass tacks and we don't need the sales pitch, to be blunt, I'll just say it that way, we are in operations mode right now. We're done with that initial discussion, so we have to get very serious. And Ken, a question, and maybe I missed it, but did we, or did you see a physical model? Have you been given access to that yet, or is that still pending? Because I know it was always a big item.
Right, no, we have not seen that.
Okay, well, that has to happen, and there's no reason that that hasn't happened yet. So I think that's something that we also want to press for. You know, strongly, I'll pause in there, thanks.
Great, thank you, Joel. Rich, I see your hand is up.
Yes. First of all, thank God for Ken and the committee, because when I looked at the plans or their presentation, a lot of the things that they've raised just bypassed me. So thank you, Ken, for getting that level of detail. I guess my my feeling was, is that they essentially said, we're just not at a stage where we can do a lot of this detail, because we really have to do that during the site planning process. And my gut feeling tells me that there's got to be more detail to what they're thinking about somewhere. And so the idea that, you know, that we need to ask for that a little more detail, they don't have to show us the shingles and the windows. But they've certainly got some schematics available that can show us what they plan versus what is existing. And I started with one of the charts, I actually thought they showed us that on one of the charts, but turns out it was the outline in the font was just the slice of where they were proposing. And then the outlines behind it were the taller buildings. What I would like to see is a slice like that with the existing buildings imposed on it, so we can see that, because I, that's number one. So I firmly agree that, you know, if that, we need to get them to do that kind of thing. The second thing is, when I looked at some of their graphics about, as they took the photos and then put the buildings in, I was particularly concerned with the mass of those buildings against the property lines of the town residents. So again, that, we just need to see that. And they certainly have, there's no reason why we can't get that. So I would support, you know, getting the letter from the committee and reacting to it very quickly and getting back to them and saying, here's our concerns. That's it.
Good, thank you. Joy, Irene, is there any comments you'd like to offer?
Yeah, I would have the, I would have the same concerns. Even, you know, having visited their, the Corso property in Atlanta, which I guess we can assume is going to be fairly similar, but maybe not in terms of architecture, but in terms of height and and scope will probably be the same. And, you know, a couple of those buildings that I saw in Atlanta looked pretty tall. And they looked pretty tall, the renderings, you know, the Photoshop renderings looked pretty tall. So I, you know, I would agree and thank you, Ken, for mentioning that. That I think it would be helpful for us to really get a sense of what everything's going to look like before they submit the LMA. And, you know, one thing I would like to ask is if we can get, and perhaps the committee can help us with this, is a little bit, you know, a deeper explanation of what goes in the LMA itself. I know they've said that it's really just a written thing, but like it's a written description of something, right? And certainly, they must have their own concepts, which is going to be their point of departure once they get to site plan. So, you know, I certainly, you know, this is not my field of expertise at all. And I think for most of our residents also, it's not, so I think that would also be helpful. And I don't know where that fits, you know, within this process of us, you know, trying to get an opportunity to comment before they submit the LMA and to provide also residents an opportunity to, you know, to voice those comments.
Good, thank you. Irene?
Yeah, thank you, and thanks again to the committee. I had a lot of the same concerns as I was, that were outlined by Ken just a few moments ago. For all the talk about compatibility, creating a space that will, you know, be healthy for all concerned, I honestly walked away from it as this is an incompatible, very much segmented community that's separate from the town and no reason to necessarily interact and vice versa. So I was very concerned by what was stated. Fundamentally, the LMA will change how this land is used from this point forward and potentially could be the springboard for further changes, you know, decades from now. So I applaud everyone keeping track of the different questions and concerns that we have about the community, how much density we're talking about, the underlying land use. And really hope that this next set of communications will get to that deeper level rather than the sales pitches, what Joel was alluding to. And that we can finally start to get some answers. And I do absolutely agree that there is an extension necessary. There were way too many questions that came out of the presentations versus answers to our initial set of questions.
Good, thank you. Let me offer my own thoughts. The, first of all, I want to pick up a comment that you made, Joel, about the integration and the paths. I've heard, and I, because I was liaison, I'm liaison to the committee, I listened to the residents who spoke to the committee and several spoke up and very expressing concern about these paths. Both, when someone from Thornapple spoke up in concern about the path at the curb cut of Thornapple that would lead into the campus. And then there were also speakers from Woodside who were concerned about a path from the end of Woodside. And I guess I, you know, I've reflected on those comments and I do understand, and obviously everyone has a reason to be concerned about parking issues, and that's essentially what the issue is here. But I have to say, as a council member, we're going to, we have obligations to the entire community, and that's going to include 400-plus residents who are going to presumably be moving into Corso. And they're going to be paying taxes to the town. And they have every reason to want convenience and safety in the way which they leave the campus. And to the point you were making, Irene, if we're interested, as I think at least several of us in the council, maybe all of us in the council are, in having integration and encouraging interaction, having these access points are important. And I feel that if there is a concern about parking, then if and when an issue arises in the future regarding parking, we have to deal with it as we normally deal with parking, with permits or other means by which we can limit it. But I am not inclined to feel that the right answer upfront is to say no and essentially further block off this community that's going to be in the town from being able to feel that they are really truly residents of the town, easily able to access town streets and able to take walks and enjoy what the town has to offer. So on that particular point, while I think, I'm speaking just personally, I've listened very carefully. I feel that I have a hard time feeling that that's a route that we should be undertaking as a council. I think those pathways are important. I think that the, on the issue of massing, on the other hand, I have a great deal of sympathy with the way the near neighbors have expressed themselves. And obviously, all of you on the council have also raised tonight. And I think that, Ken, you started off and the colleagues have concurred that, you know, we really feel there's a little bit of a snow job here, you know, we're just showing some quick rendering without the, without the details that we need to see. And therefore, it is indeed exactly a thing for us to do, which is to get back promptly with a letter that says, look, you know, here's all the additional information we need to get if you want us to have a thorough review of what our town can come to conclude. And I think when we get that information, we'll want to share it with the residents. I think I'd recommend that we then have a town forum, so we on the council, as well as the committee, can hear directly from residents who now have been able to absorb this additional information. And I think we indeed should push And I think we indeed should push for some kind of 3D modeling that people can really get to see and rotate and move and not sort of feel like they're just being spoon fed a few particular views. The more the more transparent, more comprehensive the view is of what this development is going to look like, the sooner the town can come to decisions about what potential changes we may wish to ask for. Not giving us that information is not going to cause us to make a decision. It's going to keep us from making a decision. And I say that particularly in regard to the local map amendment process. I think none of us have gone through this. Obviously, we think we have very good counsel to help us. But the process of what's going to get considered and resolved as part of the LMA on one hand, and what will then be subsequently taken up in the site review plan is something else. And I think we want to be very careful that we are not in any way pushed or pulled into a position of potentially supporting or being seen to support a project because all we've seen are some more generalized statement or 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 renderings of it. And then find in some sense that we have lost our ability to intervene or be as effective if all we can do is subsequently do more work at the time of the site review. So I think it's very important for us to get this information upfront to be able to be very focused on the height and massing issues. Make sure we understand some of the other points that can alluded to, such as the phasing, such as landscaping. But my own gut feeling is that it's the height and mass, particularly of the buildings that are on the outside that are closest to the residents, which is really going to be our most important issue. And the one that we are going to want to really bear down on and quite possibly come back with proposals of how that should be modified. And I want to make sure we do that with all the information in hand. So in my mind, that is what we should be pushing on in that in that process. Joel, please.
Yeah, I I I'm sorry to belabor the point, but just that I I completely concur with that and and being a layperson looking at these designs, when one sees a schematic or a drawing, it looks reasonable. Then we see the photos, we see the massing. So we really do need to see this model, right? And we really do. And so I I I fully support your 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 argument here that a delay delays them, a delay delay any it doesn't do anybody any good. Right? So so, you know, we're ready, sleeves are rolled up. We've got great counsel. We've got a strong team of town experts supporting this. So so we need to see all all the goods if they're going to get our get our engagement in a way that will help them facilitate the project.
Right. And I and I agree. I can't imagine being ready by in August. I mean, basically, the summer goes dead. We can have certainly activity into July. So whatever thing get us in July, that's great. We can even potentially have some consultations with our residents. But we have to see, and we will, by the way, Joy, we'll be receiving their draft local map amendment application. They said within a couple of weeks, so we will get that fairly shortly and really see what they envision as being the 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 steps, not only the steps, but the actual commitments they'd be making in their in the LMA itself. And one of the things that we'll be looking for from our council and the committee and our own views is, okay, that's what you would like to see in the LMA. What do we want to see in the LMA? What additional binding elements do we want to see that represent essentially the the recorded elements that are going to be binding on not only these owners, but potential future owners? And then separately, I'm just saying the following here for all the residents who are listening. We also envision a document of of covenants which will run between the developers in the town. And there we will also essentially often be simply copying into that document the binding elements from the LMA. But the reason for it is to make sure there's a document that the town has a signature on so that if and when a future owner wishes to make changes, they can't just go to the county to get permission. They have to come back to us. So that's the reason for that additional document. And it's very important. We're going to have to be thinking very intentionally about how that document gets developed at the same time that the LMA is is proceeding. I think is there I'm not sure. Is there anything else that we need right now to go over? I think we're going to be looking to the memo, the note that we'll get from the committee tomorrow. And I would, if I have a sense of consensus, I think what we will want to do is pulling from that, pull together very quickly a letter that will go back to the developers essentially saying, here are some issues, concerns, but primarily here are the things that we're asking for that is additional information we need in order to be able to move forward. Joel?
One more process question on this one regarding the memo. Process wise, my assumption is that we'll then put that up on the website for a town comment as well and receive comments from the community or not to put you on the spot, but yeah, I I'm you know, cognizant of how we've been able to 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 maintain that spirit so far. So want to make sure we do that again.
Right.
Thoughts? Does that work?
That works.
Yes. All right. Thanks.
Good. All right. Thank you. Anything else on this topic?
Mayor Rush, Mayor Rush?
Yes, hi Sarah.
This is Sarah Smith. I know this isn't a community input point, but I I did want to clarify something on this modeling that you all are discussing because I think there's a little confusion and misinformation on that point. The special committee is not recommending that we push for, you know, sort of a little building on a table that is presented in the town office that people can walk around and look at. What we're requesting is a 3D digital model. So I I was I was hearing from you and Joel that maybe you were thinking of something.
No, no, I'm sorry. Well, thank you for clarifying it, Sarah. That was certainly not my intent. We're all in a digital age on this. And and what I was referring to was a digital model that would be able to be moved around so people could see the different vantage points and be able to understand how it looks.
But I would have liked the little model personally.
You wanted something built out of Legos, didn't you, Joel?
I'm old school Barney.
But thank thank you for clarifying that, Sarah. Okay, with that, I'd like to move on to a discussion of the Farming Market Parks Project. And the basically, and this is for the benefit of all the residents who are listening, as well as for my colleagues. The town has finally received as of two days ago a draft letter of intent with a table attached to it showing the financial commitments that the county is envisioning for this project. The good news is that this is the very first time after, let's see, we passed our resolution last November. So here we are in June. So so seven months on, this is the first time that we have seen the county actually put on paper commitments that the least the county executive's office is prepared to make. And the I'm not going through all the details, but we are going to be making these documents available generally. Certainly first to the committee, the long range planning committee slash LUC committee, and they'll be looking at this over the next few days. But the the core of it is that the the county is from its own funds is pledging $7.75 million. The Parks Department is putting in two and a half million dollars. We know we have three and a half million dollars coming from the state. The town is currently at $4 million. The developers are putting in the seven million for density plus purchasing another million. I don't want to get dragged into all the detailed numbers. That's not the point. I shouldn't go further on that. But the crux of it is that there is that for this is a lot of progress and it's good, but there's still some financial gap. Exactly how large that gap is is a little unclear because when we reviewed these numbers, we saw that there was a mistake in the table and the county is now going back and reconsidering this. But there is probably still a gap of a few million dollars one way or the other. The other the other feature of this is that they are asking the town to consider expanding its its support from four million to 4.5 million, so an additional $500,000. One detail that I will mention, which is kind of interesting is that some of maybe you know, the state has pledged three and a half million dollars for this project. And there are a lot of people who deserve thanks for that, including our entire delegation. And both Jared, Centers, Walt Stryker, Alkar, Emily Steady, but also that was worked on strongly by by Andrew Friedson and also by Casey Anderson. So there was a lot of good work done to to get that state support. However, the state was not eager to see this all channel through the county. So two and a half million dollars of the three million is channeled through the parks. The other $1 million is channeled through the town of Chevy Chase. It's explicit in the legislative language. So I don't know quite how the mechanics of that will work, but we will receive effectively a million dollars, which we will then be pass for the construction of this project incremental to any direct amount that we ourselves give. The so all that is where it sits at the moment in terms of process. The the we've been told by the Department of Transportation and they oversee this because they own the parking lots through the Bethesda Parking Lot District. Is that the county executive is preparing a an amendment to the CIP, to the Capital Investment Program, that they will be working on that over the summer, expect to submit it in September and would hope that the county council will review and approve it promptly. The separately, I'll add to that point, as I may have mentioned before, that Irene and I in the past have met with six of the nine current council members and know that there's very strong support for this. So we would not envision any difficulty in getting approval of this amendment from 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 the county council. Separate from from that drafting of a CIP amendment, we also will need to work on this letter of intent, which is ultimately to be signed by the four parties, the Parks Department, the town, the developers and the county. And the draft clearly needs a fair amount of work. And we are going to be asking Ron to be engaged in that. We'll need be getting comments and looking for those from the committee. But it is important that in that draft, we see in my preliminary view much more attention paid to some of the conditions that we put into the resolution that we passed last November than we have seen in this current draft. So there's going to be some real negotiation to do here. I think in terms of how we go forward, I would only ask my colleagues and also committee and the residents who will be considering to let's make sure we keep first things first. We really want this deal to come together and we want it to come together, I believe, soon. I I for one, just speaking personally, but having been a developer in my professional career, you never know what risks are out there that could bite you. And when you have the momentum and you think you can get the deal done, it really behooves us to act accordingly and get it done and not let it get dragged out. You know, we certainly don't want it to get dragged out after elections. There'll be a different county council. We don't even know, of course, who will be the county executive. We don't know what further macroeconomic effects could change developers' views. There are a lot of unknowns. So my feeling is that getting a deal done and pushing this further without and and is very important. The other thing that's very important is making sure that we have a very complete and and solid financial plan. I think what we've seen is still rickety in some respects and needs to be more fleshed out. And and I think if and when we were to consider any potential further increase in our support, I would probably feel that it should be tied in some conditional way to making sure that the financial plan itself is strengthened. That's not just up to us putting in some more money, but that the all the gaps are identified and solved. So those are just some very quick reflections. I would recommend in terms of next steps that the the we get the materials in front of the committee that's going to meet on Monday night and begin to get their thoughts and input. And then when we hear back, we ought to, and I think we may wish to call a special council meeting for further discussion to try to formulate what our response might be. But I think it would be good for us to work with this proactively and and try to be responsive as in an appropriate way, which respects, and I want to stress this, respects the fact that we want to make sure that we get input from the town and from residents as we move forward. And we certainly do not want to get back with any response until we have been able to have a good, strong dialogue with our community. So I'll leave it with that. All of you have been able to review the materials as well. And so I'm certainly open for comments or other ideas or anything else you'd like to propose for how we wish to go forward at this point. Go ahead, Joel.
Just a quick comment. Thank you for shepherding this to this point, Barney. And I do think we we broke through some of the logjam with the paper that was submitted regarding the budget. And I I concur the need to keep the pressure on and keep pushing. And this is going to be a huge achievement for the area and for the residents in our town, as well as around the Bethesda and the new people coming into this region and in the purple line four years down the road. This is it. This is the last spot of open space available to convert to green in this area. So kudos to our delegation and I I agree, if we can get it done and signed before this election or before before the turnover in government, that's crucial. So that we don't have to go through a whole reeducation process of the new members and the new staff, get this get this done now is crucial.
Thank you. Rich, Irene, Joy, anything you wish to add? Okay, so we will get these materials to the committee and they'll be meeting on Monday. The I've talked to both Rich and to Joel. They effectively are co liaisons because these two is they're merged at the moment. But I've asked that I'd like to attend as well to give some background. And so therefore, it'll become de facto a we have to announce it as a town council meeting, but it'll still be focused and I will only be attending for the this one agenda item, obviously, and then drop off. But I do think we'd like to see what the committee thinks and begin to fashion how we and after that, how we as a council want to respond and what we may wish to put in front of our residents for for consideration. All right, good. With that, I'd like to move to the next discussion item, which is stormwater management and green infrastructure projects. And I see Dan, you have joined us. That's great. But let me first turn it to Joy and Todd. I don't know how you want to kick off the discussion or lead it. Leave it up to you.
Oh, let's see.
Terrific. Yeah, yeah, thanks. And yeah, I would just like to kick it off. And first of all, you know, commend our town staff and members of our Climate and Environment Committee who have done a lot of work since the council met last month. When we raised the whole issue of the the expiration date of our ARPA funding and the in kind of revisiting the process that we adopted last fall in that we decided as a council to to, you know, focus our ARPA grant on two sets of activities, one for nonprofit organizations that serve town residents that have suffered as a result of the pandemic and two stormwater management and you know, green infrastructure in general. And given that the the committee and our town staff have met several times, including a marathon session this afternoon to really talk about some of the some of the areas that require attention. And I'll let Todd talk about those in a moment. But I would be remiss if I did not mention the extreme weather event that we had last Thursday, which probably would not be addressed by any stormwater infrastructure, a stormwater management or green infrastructure that the town could put into place. But it really does highlight how important this issue is for many, many residents and many points within the town. And that time is of the essence in terms of doing everything that we can now and trying to plan for the future to address a lot of these extreme weather events and how they're going to affect our properties. And so with that, I'd like to turn it over to Todd to talk about, you know, what you all have accomplished so far. And, you know, what you would like the council to do this evening. And you know, what you would like the council to do this evening.
Thanks, Joy. Pardon me if I don't turn on my video. I'm referring to a number of documents here. So all you would see was much the top of my head.
At least you have got hair on it.
Genetics are good in that respect. Let's see. Thanks, Joy, for that introduction of the of the issue. Last month, the council discussed and agreed on for for projects to focus on initially. For the use of ARPA funds for potential stormwater management and green infrastructure projects. I'll run through them relatively quickly and 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 let you know what actionable items need to be taken tonight. The council agreed to pursue Coquelin Run Stream Bank stabilization. And we have reached out to the county's Department of Environmental Protection to request engineering and construction oversight assistance. The point of contact was out for some time after the Memorial Day holiday. And so we're waiting to hear back from them about some form of assistance they can provide, very similar to what DEP provided to the town in two thousand and six. No, not two thousand and six, earlier than that, likely fifteen or so years ago when we did the initial bank stabilization that you see today. And so if we can't, if if for some reason the county is unresponsive or cannot assist. We recommend contracting with the consulting engineer firm of Clark Azar, who is actually doing the engineering for the improvements to Zimmerman Park. And they would provide engineering permitting and construction oversight assistance to the town in further stabilizing the Coquelin Run Stream Bank. To prevent any type of future undermining of Lynn Drive. We would need to we would need to get access agreements from the private property owners over there in order to be able to enter private property to make the improvements. Dave has already made outreach to those residents and found that they're pretty amenable to to that possibility. With respect to Rosemary Triangle redevelopment.
Todd, can you please amplify? Just make sure, I want to make sure I take that on board. You're saying he's spoken to the year residents and they feel supportive of undertaking this additional rip rap up the up the channel.
Yeah, Dave's done done some initial outreach to those property owners and they were receptive to the to providing access agreements, temporary access and construction agreements for this work.
Okay, all right.
That will need to be followed up by some legal documentation that Ron will assist with with respect to the actual access agreements themselves. But the initial reaction was positive. Council also discussed Rosemary Triangle of Stormwater Management. And received a proposal from the Climate and Environment Committee regarding redevelopment of the park. And with native plantings and several different amenities to improve that park. We have discussed this with Clark Azar. With the town's arborist and with Edomari Mate from Backyard Bounty. I believe that's the team we would assemble in order to pursue these improvements. And then and we do intend to engage those resources to ultimately develop a conceptual design plan for the park. But we wanted to ensure that we received council feedback on the elements of the proposal before proceeding. We also discussed this afternoon, the idea of putting the concept proposal out to the near neighbors and to the community as a whole. In order to get their initial feedback on the proposal and the concept itself before we engaged the engineering and landscape design resources that we need to begin to develop an actual design plan. So that there can be education and engagement of the near neighbors and the community on what is intended or expected or anticipated to be done in the park. To ensure that there is sufficient support for the improvements.
Rich, did you have a question?
Yeah. As I looked at that conceptual plan that the committee submitted. I don't know how any resident could actually look at that and make any kind of rational decision about what looks good and what doesn't because some of those things would be essentially reengineering of that site and would be probably very expensive. So I think before we get it to the residents, we ought to have that proposal segmented somehow so that we can say, okay, here's the here's the things that we can do that aren't going to cause much disruption, you know, take the plantings up, replace them with native species. But the things like creating you know, a little sitting area and doing some of that stuff, it's going to require some substantial reengineering of that site. And while I, you know, while when I read it, I said, gee, that's really a good idea. I was just really concerned about kind of scoping this thing out and 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 a little little more detail to get give people the idea of the difficulty of of doing some of those things, the difficulty and cost of doing some of those. So I I just wanted to throw that out as my initial reaction of looking at at the at some of the work. So I I guess the the bottom line for me is is there some way that we could get them, the Clark Azar or somebody to look at the look at that and just kind of give just ballpark estimates about how difficult it is and how much it would cost for some of those elements without. And and then go out to the residents and say, look, you know, here's the ideas and here's kind of ballpark of what we we think it may cost and and how much, how much work it's going to be. My two cents.
Yeah, it's my response would be it would be pretty hard for them to put a rough order of magnitude cost estimate together just based on this one page proposal. I think maybe the logical way to proceed would be for the council to hold a work session or something to that effect to discuss or flesh out this plan a little bit more, indicate which elements that they potentially would like to see in a in a in an initial concept plan. If there is a an incremental approach to to the the improvements to the park whereby we would do a feature of like of a conservation landscaping or redo one planting bed, but not but not put in benches initially, for example, or a water feature, for example, but I think that this this proposal's got to be fleshed out a bit more in order to even begin to do a rough order of magnitude cost estimate. For for these for these improvements. Would the council be amenable to holding a work session to or or a separate discussion in another meeting? To give its or to give its feedback about the proposed elements of the of the redesign and determine how they'd like to proceed from either an incremental or an incremental way or or a full or a full blown redevelopment possibility.
Well, I'll offer my thought about it, Todd. I think fundamentally, anything like this requires a process. It's not too similar to what we did with Zimmerman. I mean, yeah, we've got to, we've got to get into it, understand what the elements are. Have a draft plan put together that residents can react to that is tactile, that, you know, they can really get a sense of. It's got to be specific. Otherwise, it's impossible for residents to respond. And and then we have to take their input and consider it and make further modifications. But I I think it's a it's a process that we have to go through. But but I I agree with Rich, there has to be you know, specific elements there that that are on paper and people can see what it truly looks like and and be able to respond to it. See, your hand is up.
I just had a quick clarification question, which was, so there's four projects that are under consideration. Is the intent to spend the one point one million that's left over from this year on those four projects? Or also dip into the funds that will be coming next year? Because I I don't know if there has been a an estimate out there for what the Coquelin Run Stream Bank stabilization will will be in and kind of working backwards. I don't know ultimately what what will be left for Rosemary Triangle. So just asking.
Good question for a treasure to ask. I'm glad you've asked that.
We don't have any indication yet of what the stream bank stabilization will cost in Coquelin Run. It depends upon what kind of assistance is offered or available from the county. That could further reduce our costs from going it alone. So
Let's assume that they don't. Let's get, you know, let's let's just assume that they're going to be like they usually are. So we have to pay for it. What would it cost?
I have no idea. I have to go to the engineer and determine that. They'd have to do some review of the site to determine what it might cost. I just couldn't give you that figure off the top of my
No, no, I I'm sorry. I didn't mean to be assume that you could. I think that's
Well, that's all, yeah. The assumption in all of these is that we'll get ROM costs, but we just can't do it yet. So I can't tell you how much will be a portion to each project at this point. I just can't tell you that.
Right, but I wasn't sure whether the intent for these four identified projects was to spend the one point one million at the end or or adding in next years. Cause I'm also thinking about farm women's market. So I just, I don't know if if working backwards when we're having these work sessions about amenities is the appropriate way to go, meaning do we go blue sky and then work back, work, you know, towards earth? Or or figure out, okay, this is essentially what would be left over for a Rosemary Triangle type project.
I don't have an answer to that question.
Rich?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna jump on with Irene here. I my, one of my concerns about some of these projects is there are definite timelines for completion so that we can retain those monies from ARPA. So it's, and I believe that the one point one, I don't remember, the first tranche has to be has to be obligated by some point in near, it's not too far future.
Oh, it's like at the end of twenty twenty four.
Oh, is it twenty twenty four?
Yeah.
Two years. About two years.
Obligated by twenty twenty four, spent by twenty twenty six.
Ah, okay.
By December of twenty twenty six.
Calendar years, yeah.
Okay, so there's not, there's not that much urgency about it, but but we still need to know of that pot, what what of these four things are we going to kind of look at in terms of ballpark or each of them? So we know whether or not we're going to be able to totally obligate that money or are we gonna over? Do we need to make some town contribution? So
Right, point taken, absolutely. And I and you know, funds have to be obligated by the end of twenty twenty four and spent by the end of twenty twenty six. The obligation function is is pretty easy, in my opinion. You can obligate funds to certain projects, generally stormwater management. Nonprofit assistance. Even now that we have taken it as 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 I don't remember the term, but as supplemental funds, we can use it for really any purpose we want. So it really depends upon whether the council considers these projects that were solely being undertaken in order to use ARPA or would have been funded by the town regardless of whether received ARPA funds. And I sort of see it as the latter. Frankly, these are all issues we need to address regardless of whether we have ARPA funds. They're clearly squarely in the wheelhouse of ARPA funding. Based on what the council agreed to. And ARPA funds will be used whether we use the existing remaining one point one million dollar tranche or 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 the additional monies we'll receive in the next tranche. But yes, all of the monies here and for these projects, we intend to use ARPA funds for. There are other projects that we could use them for as well, but I don't have rough order of magnitude cost yet for any of these projects. This is just the initial determination of which projects the council wants to move forward with so that we can get those estimates for you. There are certainly other programs or projects that we could use ARPA money for. But I don't find these projects to be solely dependent on our receipt of ARPA funds.
Joy?
Um, yeah, I would also just like to add that, you know, you know, there is an expiration date on the funds. Government does not move as fast as corporate America. And so, Rich, you know, you're right. We do need to kind of move forward because given what happens in terms of us considering some of these projects. Resident involvement that may need to, you know, we we may need to consult residents, certainly in the case of a Rosemary Triangle improvement, it's going to take some time. And so there's some other things like Coquelin Run, for example, which seems to be I mean, this is something that's been kind of hanging over us for a while. It needs to be addressed. And that might be a a project that, you know, we kind of get moving on right away, whereas some of these other ones are going to require some consultation. And the the point of, you know, having town staff and committee members talk about these is that, you know, these are the ones that have kind of risen to the top that desire that that require more immediate attention and or which we can also give residents some relief. Those over there by the Coquelin Run site, as well as some of the other ones that Todd will talk about.
Yeah, why don't we hear about all, because you're referring to four, and I think so far we've heard about two. Is that right? So I want to make sure we cover all four and then we can double back.
That's right. And as Joy, as Joy indicated, these are projects the council, you know, decided to pursue at last month's meeting. So we're just bearing down on these to make sure. Are you you accept the willingness of the town to move forward in the way that's being recommended this evening? And 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 obviously discuss process as well on some of these issues. The other initiative, town council agreed to stand back up is the Rainscapes Rebate and Technical Assistance Program. Which essentially will revive that program that previously was stood up in I don't know, several years ago, a number of years ago, effectively giving matching rebates to residents who participate in the County Rainscapes Program for implementation of Rainscapes projects on private property. And providing them technical assistance in designing and overseeing construction of the projects. Initially, the group recommends that we stand up a program very much similar to the way it was before and that we don't initially at least offer a separate program solely administered by the town for a number of reasons that I won't go into. But certainly could revisit that if the Rainscapes Program becomes oversubscribed in the fall. But initially, we'd like to stand up the previous program, advertise it to the residents so that they can subscribe to it. Effective July one, when the Rainscapes Program reopens up in the county. So that they can take advantage of not only the County Rainscapes Program, but also receive a rebate and possible technical assistance reimbursement from the town. By participating in the in the County Rainscapes Program.
How much is that for household?
Previously, it was a thousand dollars for technical assistance and we would match the rebate that the county provides for these different projects. And they're based on unit cost per square foot of improvement. And we would match the rebate, obviously not to exceed the total cost of the project. A maximum rebate residents can receive through the Rainscape rebate program is seventy five hundred dollars. But it's based on unit costs for each project, square footage of impermeable surface removed. How large?
If you if you add up what we would give and what they'd get from the county, how much is the homeowner responsible for?
It depends upon the cost of the maximum they can get from the county is seventy five hundred and we would match it at seventy five hundred. Potentially, if it doesn't exceed the cost, total cost of the project.
So if the project costs were fifteen thousand, then the count, the sum of the county and the town would be a hundred percent of the cost of the project?
That's the way it was structured before. Yeah, we could structure it a different way, but the details of the program would have to be discussed by the council. But yes. The only provision or condition was that the town would match the rebate from the county as long as the total exceed the cost of the project.
Okay. I I just to throw out one comment, I'm I'm I must prefer a program where the homeowner is still responsible for some fractional amount of the total. It's odd to think of the circumstance that
Sure.
Hundred percent we're paid for by the county and the town.
Right. There there are provisions we could put in place that would say, you know, fifty percent of the of the rebate. Of the the county's amount of rebate, I but the way it was structured before was that we would match that rebate as long as it didn't exceed the total cost of the project. But I get your.
Joyce, Joyce hand us up and then uh Rich after Joy.
Sure, yeah, I would just like to mention, um, yeah, there's certainly a question of optics. In that case, looks, you know. It's not necessarily a good look. However, the point of rain escapes. And the point of our individual program is not to address. Stormwater management issues in the public right of way. It is to address. Issues that are occurring on private property that then impact other neighbors downstream. And so, the, you know, I. I don't have any, like, you know, I, what do I care if water, you know, rushes over my neighbor? It doesn't really bother me. But it bothers the neighbor, and so it's sort of like, how do we convince the person upstream from you? To make an improvement that really he's otherwise disinterested in.
So that's. Joy, I have to say from looking at the videos, you, you are absolutely the poster child for that circumstance.
Right, so, um, you know. In order to convince my upstream neighbors to spend the money, I mean, it doesn't, it may not, you know, I don't know what their issues are either. But I'm just saying that, um. You know, that is really the intent, so I think setting up a program like this also. Would involve a lot of education and and communication with neighbors and as a town. You know, we would probably want to look at, um, and this is, this is related, I don't want to steal too much of your thunder, Todd. Um, but to kind of look at some of those. Pain points within the town where we know we have significant issues and that maybe there would be clusters of homes. That could get assistance to try to address some issues, but again, it would all be on private property.
Understood, thank you. Rich?
Well, I. Contrary to you, Barney, I don't have any problems with the town. You know, funding half of, essentially half of a fifteen thousand dollar project. Precisely for the reasons that the joy just mentioned, I mean, these are, it's, there are. Goals of this thing which are, which are pretty important to. You know, to the residents in terms of the stuff that flows into their properties, but also the storm where I imagine, so I think it's a healthy. Thing for us to do. Like, the, I got a question for Todd is that if we're trying to replicate the program we had in the past. How successful and how well subscribed was it?
Good question, good question.
We had fifty people sign up for participation in the rain escapes program. Um, following though, the, the new, the process that they had to go through with the county with initial site assessments and determination of. Feasibility of project implementation. And ultimately finalizing and actually re getting reimbursement from the county, there were ten projects that we funded.
So that would mean if we got, if we got ten more. And our total, our total outlay. Is seventy five hundred dollars per those ten, we're only, we're not talking about a lot of money, right?
No.
And and it could be ARPA, it could be ARPA funded, is that right? Is that the underlying premise here, right? Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Uh, Joel?
Yeah, no, I, 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 I only want to just affirm what I'm hearing. I, I think the, um. Sort of the infrastructure that is on private property, it has a public benefit. People will understand, you know, why, why it's being. Looked at and and why we'd be looking, we'd be looking to use public funds for it. Today, not your house, tomorrow could be, who knows? Um, there, it's just, this is, this is, this is the way it works, streets, we don't just pay to pave the street that we drive on. And not pave the other one that we don't use, we pave all the streets in the town of Chevy Chase. You know, that's just how it works. I don't like maple, maybe they shouldn't get it paved, no, that's not how it goes, so, um. So, yeah, I, I, I'm in line with where we're heading.
So just to note to.
I do love maple, by the way, for any maple residents, I do like maple.
I won't take it personally.
So just to note to the council, and in, you know, in tandem with re reviving the rain escapes rebate and technical assistance program, we would also. Um, advertise some modifications or not really modifications or clarifications to our um consulting water management program. To ensure that residents were aware that during the course of requesting. Um, a consulting water engineers visit to their property that that engineer would also potentially recommend. Um, rain escapes eligible projects for implementation on the property. So that uh they could use that as sort of an initial site assessment, if you will, in order to determine whether or not they should apply. For a rain escapes project. Um, so those would go tandem, not necessarily, they wouldn't be consolidated, but. The consulting water management would continue to be a standalone. Program that residents can take advantage of, but would also potentially recommend uh rain escapes eligible projects for implementation.
Okay.
And then finally, it's the Thornapple Sump that, um. The council's interest on looking into, we heard back from the county today about. What its intentions are, you know, with respect to this, what we got out of that was essentially that they're willing to install some additional inlets. Uh, along there, uh, in order to try to alleviate some. Uh, some of the flooding issues. And that they're undertaking further studies to determine what else might be non holistically countywide, which I don't. Particularly expect to uh be focused on the town. And we could also, um. Ask our consulting engineer Clark Azar to perform a study to identify possible improvements not related to county infrastructure, including green infrastructure or road profile. Modifications. In that area that would further limit the amount of rainwater actually. Getting to the street into the storm drains as quickly as it does currently.
I'm sorry, uh, Todd, what might be an example of that?
Just I understand. Of what?
What you were just saying, what, 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 uh, Azar might be able to recommend?
There are, there's different. Applications like tree boxes, um, treating water before it gets the storm drain by extending it and capturing it and treating it. And slowing it down before it reaches the storm drain. Pavement retrofitting, if we want to do permeable pavement on, on some of the sidewalks, it could be. Um, additional tree planting potentially, um, but infra, green infrastructure is primarily like permeable pavement. Um, storm drain modifications to, to treat the water, tree boxes and things like that.
Okay.
Or we could also modify road profiles, meaning, you know, you would tilt the street a different way or, you know, or. Re reconfigure it such that water drains in a certain direction versus another.
Okay. Rich?
Well, I would. I, I think that approach, which is to have somebody take a look at some of those other things that can be done. Would be very useful because the, um, their memo, it doesn't appear that there's any hope of. Expanding the size of that sewer complex down to, uh, down to the outfall, so. You know, I, I think some of those strategies. May help some of those residents down there. The other thing that I, I want, and and the reason is, is because. If you look at those. Videos, those waters cleared out fairly quickly. And so it, it, it may not take a lot of. Curb raising or burn building or box, you know, whatever Azar would look at. To help mitigate that initial rush of water. So that that storm system can handle and, um. And I was really impressed that the start, the, the system did work pretty well. It just was overwhelmed at the beginning and it, and we don't know why, it could, could have been some drains were blocked, could have been a. Blockage in one of the main lines, it could have been a whole bunch of things. But it cleared out really rapidly and, uh.
I'm glad you made that last point because I was, uh, Dan, I was, uh, I guess it didn't come from you, but somebody else sent the videos of your block. Uh, and. What your wife Mary described was absolutely in the, in the video, I mean. Within about thirty seconds, I mean, because the video is only just over a minute long. And in the last thirty seconds, that water just went whoosh. And, and I think to the point that you've made and 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 Mary made. Um, it has to make you think that maybe there was a blockage somewhere and it's suddenly finally the force of the water was so great, it cleared it out. And then, wow, it just, you just sucked it all down. It was really quite amazing, but go ahead, please, your hand is up, I'm happy to hear.
I'll just chime in briefly, absolutely, and. The other point that I want to. Throw in there, i- i- there have been some allusions to this as well as. Of course, there's a immediate focus on the street and if the street floods and the particular homes. That are affected. Um, on the street. But it's everything downstream that's also affected. You know, you mentioned earlier, uh, Joy's the poster child or whatever, and we had other videos showing the flooding on Leland and Maple.
Yeah.
And that's all the result of. The watershed. Naturally pushing the surface water. You know, there is water that's underground in the gray infrastructure, but all the surface water comes rushing down, so the more. Uh, you know, as, as Joy was saying, the more the upstream. Public area or private residents who are able to. Retain some additional water, it helps not only Thornapple. Street itself and the forty two hundred block of Thornapple, but everything downstream of there. Between Maple and Oak Ridge all the way to Coquelin Run, so anyway, just make that. You know, there's a broader impact of doing this besides just the local folks.
Fair enough, good. Okay, um, I'm conscious of time, and we still have a couple more agenda items. Uh, Joy and Todd, do you want to, or what is, what is? You want to summarize where we are in these different. Perspective programs and what is it you're asking for the council tonight to be able to. Uh, to approve or to go forward with the next steps?
What I'd like to do is, um, is get your direction feedback on, um. Moving forward with, um, all of the items that Todd mentioned. Um, and, you know, just getting also clarification in terms of, you know. What do we need in terms of? Process, what other information does the council need for each of these items in order to approve them? Because we do have, so our ARPA process, I mean, this is part of the ARPA process that we set up last fall. Where, um, you know, we would present items to the council. Uh, residents would have an opportunity to comment, um, and then we could just move forward. Uh, to obligate funds in cases where, where we're able to do so. Todd?
That's right.
Okay, um, and I think what Ben basically said, we'd want to make sure that the residents had a. At least one session. If it was introduced one council meeting, it was the next council meeting, we make a final decision, so they all were, were, okay.
And, and so actually, one of these has a bit of a, uh. Is, is somewhat time sensitive, and that's the rain escapes rebate program, um, and that's because. Rain, the, the county rain escapes program has been halted or kind of, you know, stopped for, uh, you know. Extreme, uh, for oversubscription. And we understand it's going to be reinitiated in July. And so we would like to reinitiate our rain escapes rebate program so that. Residents who would like to participate in the county program, you know. Likewise, could have our program that they could also. Uh, access for assistance.
I'm sorry, uh, Rich, did you wish to make a comment?
Well, no, I want to, I, I just, it, it sounds to me like what, and Joy, you need to correct me if I'm wrong. Are you just asking us to say, yeah, go ahead at full speed with all these things and try and get them accomplished as quickly as we can?
Yes.
Yes, but I, I think there is, they are, they are different and.
But they're all different, exactly.
Different, I, I, I could offer my thoughts and.
Please.
Mary, and that's, let, let's take up the things that I think are very straightforward here. Uh, I think, and I'm going to agree with the consensus that we would like to see the rain escape program begun. Uh, so I would ask that the council, uh, and put this into the minutes and, uh, take a final vote in the July. Uh, council meeting to, I would like to go forward using our money for this program. That would be one specific outcome from tonight. Um, I would also recommend that we, and I think this is the consensus, I'm just summing it up. That we all feel we should move forward, uh, expeditiously with the support of the, an additional rip rap at Coquelin Run. Uh, we're asking, uh, town, the, the town manager to proceed. And, uh, start, you know, trying to obtain hiring engineer or retaining estimates as might be required. And come back to the council when we have enough information that we could potentially appropriate that money. And I, just speaking now for myself. I'm happy to have us make further effort for the county to participate, but if they don't. I think we should, something we still want to do, and this is right in the middle of the fairway of what ARPA money is for. Obviously, we want to see a cost estimate to Irene's point, so we have to know that. But I think that to me is what we'd really be looking for is a engineering plan and cost estimate to undertake that work. Um, in regard to, to, uh. The Thornapple Sump, I think there's very little for us to do except to endorse the fact that. That, uh, we want, uh, the storm, what is the county to put in the additional inlets. Uh, that's a no brainer, they're, they're, it's their budget. Uh, I'm not quite sure what they meant by the current fiscal year of twenty three, twenty four, someone can explain that to me. But in any event, I think that all it's really doing is asking Todd to follow up and make sure that they actually commit to doing that work. Uh, in what I presume is the upcoming fiscal year. And to also ask Azar to do some work along the lines of what Todd described for what could potentially interrupt. Uh, or provide some additional green landscaping, uh, running into that sump. And then in respect to, uh, the. Work in the triangle, I think there, that's perhaps the most amorphous of the projects. And needs more time to be considered and pieces put together. Uh, but I think we'd encourage that work to be undertaken and. Um, I think if what is needed is. A work session for the council, that's fine, but even for that work session to be successful. We need to have some specific design elements and some ideas of what can be done, so we know what we're doing, you know, in such a session. Uh, and I'm not sure, I agree with you, Rich, I don't think the one pager is enough for us to actually formulate a specific plan. So I guess I would turn it back to you, Todd, to see what, what, what would you want the council to accomplish? Maybe we need an initial sort of conceptual work session and then a subsequent one, one who actually see more detailed. Ideas, but, but I think we need some guidance there for how we can be efficient and, and moving that project along. But I see that one as something which will take longer, uh, because of the, uh. Needing to know more about it and ultimately having to have full engagement with the near residents. That's my quick summary of the different points.
Irene? I had some a- additional things, thanks, uh, Barney for that. Uh, with respect to the rain escapes rebate program. Uh, I would recommend that there's some marketing materials, how, how will this? Be communicated to residents and then what that, what that upper limit that we'd like to start out with, so. Uh, Todd had mentioned there were fifty homes before, obviously, we'd like there to be, um. More than fifty homes participating in this, but I'd like, just as we did with the gas powered leaf blower, just some sort of upper limit. Uh, initially, if it's oversubscribed, that's fantastic, meaning on our end, um, but ju- just so that we, we understand that. For July, um, just, just your initial thoughts on that. With respect to Coquelin Run. I would also recommend that we reach out. I know that there's been initial, um, discussions by Dave that the, the residents are, you know, fine with the access and stuff. But I'd like there to be some more, um, document, documents distributed for expectations, so. Um, you know, the, we're gonna be doing this and we expect that this is going to, um. Create, you know, X Y Z results and not for people to either overestimate or underestimate what it is that. That this, um, stabilization will do. Uh, so just recommending that, that some additional documentation take place there. Um, with respect to the, uh, Thornapple, I agree, go, following up and saying, sure, line us up for all the. Uh, inlets, um, and also, uh, that, that Clark Azar. Consider some, uh, you know, uh, additional improvements, um, that could help in that area. And, um, we've gotten lots of videos, but again, I don't know if there's other. Upstream or downstream impacts that we haven't documented that might help it Clark Azar as they're determining some. Recommendation, so I'm not entirely sure what to do about that. And then finally, with the, I, I completely agree on the rosemary triangle that. Um, we, we don't know enough now to understand. we, we don't know enough now to understand what steps to take, uh, and, and what, what that's going to look like. When initially Rosemary Triangle was, uh, identified as a potential place for the, what ended up becoming the Denison Garden, the different, uh, landscapers that we interviewed had varying ideas for what that space would look like. And so therefore Clark Azar might come back with some additional things and what's been proposed in that one pager. So I would say it'd be more so, what can you do for X amount? What would that look like? And see how many points off of that one pager are being targeted, uh, I'm sorry, being resolved, if you will, if that makes sense. So if we gave, I'm just going to throw out a number, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. What would you get for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars off of that one pager list of, um, identifying elements and amenities and then kind of take it from there? I'm not saying it has to be that amount. I'm just offering that up. Thanks.
Thank you. Rich?
Um, on the Coquelin Run, I just want to remind Todd as they think about the residents along there, and when we were doing the Purple Line assessment stuff, one of the interesting things we saw was an owner of the stretch of that land along Coquelin Run is actually not a resident. It's a, it's a tribal government. So you may have some problems running down that quote resident.
I, I don't think it's going that far upstream. I, I, I hope we're not going that far upstream to involve that strip of land. Uh, I think what we're thinking is a bit below that, but Todd, you can, you can correct me if I'm mistaken.
Dave's on the line. Dave, are you there?
I'm here, yes.
That would involve that, that co-owned strip of land, correct?
It does?
It does. Yeah, I guess it's the piece of land that's owned by four different households. But they have basically assigned, uh, one resident to be the representative. Um, so I don't think there's a whole lot of issue there, but we certainly know that we need to reach out and get the consent of all the property.
Thank you. Is, is that what you meant by tribal? That there were four people have to be involved? Did you?
I know, I, yes. It was a, it was a collective own.
A collective, okay, okay. All right. Um, are we, do we, is there more, uh, uh, Joy and, and, um, Todd that you want from the council tonight? Or do you think you have enough guidance for next steps on these different items?
So next, next steps discreetly in July, do you want to hold a discussion or a public hearing on the reestablishment or revival of the Rainscapes program?
I think our, our spirit in which we've handled ARPA is a public hearing. Is that right, Joy? Is that what you've heard? So it'll be a public hearing, but we'd expect immediately take a vote.
Very good. Well, um, Dave, Dave will continue to, um, press on the county about Coquelin Run and, um, if it can't get anywhere, we'll engage Clark Azar to do some initial estimations of, uh, of the scope of the project and, and then estimate of the cost.
Right.
I'll follow up with the county.
Yeah, you'll, you'll respond to the letter you received today and let them know, yeah, please put in the inlets, right?
Yeah, exactly. And ask for some clarification on the fiscal year in which they're going to fund it and, um, we'll do a windshield survey with, um, Clark Azar. Well, Rosemary Triangle is to be determined. I, I assume at this point we'll have to figure out and flesh that out a little bit more.
I think, I think we need a little bit more clarity on that before we know exactly what to do. I don't, I don't want to suggest it's not important. That's not, I don't want anyone to think that, just we want to do it. When we think we can really grapple with it, with the necessary inputs, that's really important.
Right. And the only other thing was that in addition to those projects, we, we're also recommending that we, we ask Clark Azar to perform just not, not with respect to the Thornapple some in particular, but with respect to generally GI, green infrastructure in, in the, on public property and town rights away, to do a windshield survey effectively with a couple hours with, with Dave and
Sure.
others to identify opportunities, limitations, and best practices for potentially implementing green infrastructure in, in the public rights away.
That sounds fine. I like the term windshield. Okay.
That's what they call it when they do road improvements. So I used it for the same terminology for the
Basically a quick run, a quick run through if I, if I
Exactly, exactly.
Good. Are there any other, are there any of my comments for my colleagues? I don't see any hands up. Okay, good. No, there's a lot of good discussion and I think we've made some headway and look forward to further delineation in July and approval of, I trust of the, uh, reinitiating the Rainscape program. So that's good. All right. Uh, moving on to Pepco, uh, streetlight tariff, we wanted a bit of discussion about that. There's been a lot of back and forth among several of us. And Irene, let me turn it over to you.
Yeah, so I'm just coming up to speed on, on this issue, but, uh, essentially for, just for summary purposes, for a while now municipalities technically on paper have been able to, uh, purchase streetlights so that, municipalities can maintain them and switching over to LED costs less for maintenance and, and all of that. On paper, um, that's been out there as a policy. However, the process that Pepco has outlined to purchase for, for municipalities to purchase these streetlights is not very free, straightforward as, and there's a lot of unclear language of what constitutes fair market value. So that when municipalities purchase, Pepco gets what they think is fair. That being said, the pressing issue is that Pepco is proposing an updated tariff schedule. Our state delegates, along with county council members, have put in a letter saying that, you know, the, the tariffs and, and the definitions and additional kind of phantom maintenance charges and third-party agreements and all of that good stuff is not very transparent. And, uh, as a result, it's very, very difficult once again for municipalities to accurately determine what the costs would be, not only to own the streetlights, but maintain them moving forward. So it's kind of, kind of set up as a barrier to ownership. That being said, I'm coming up to speed on this, but the village of Chevy Chase has, uh, done a tremendous deep dive.
Chevy Chase, section three, right?
Uh, actually, the village has done more of a deep dive and section three has, perhaps Ron has been more involved on that end in terms of putting together letters and, and, uh, kind of explanation of, or, or concerns uh, about the process itself. So, but really it's been the village. Um, it's my understanding that's, that's deeply researched this issue. And, um, there was to be a public hearing on this updated tariff schedule, scheduled for June fifteenth, but that's been postponed to a date that at least I don't know what that date, the, the, the newest date is for the public hearing. So where we are at this point is, um, Todd had, had asked Ron to put together a letter, relatively straightforward letter that explains that we're in support of the concerns that the state delegates and county council members have about this updated tariff schedule, that there is given, uh, some unclear language. Um, there is, uh, it, there's, it's a barrier to, for municipalities like ours to move forward and make a decision about whether or not to purchase the streetlights and, and all that, because we just don't have all the information. And that's where we are. We have a, a letter in front of us and, uh, the Public Services Committee, is going to review this letter as the rest of the council and we'll get ourselves organized for whenever the public hearing will be set up for. Ron, please, I'm sure I missed a few details.
No, no, I would, I would just add that I, I'm on the PSC website right now. It looks like it has been tentatively put on their June twenty-ninth agenda.
Thank you.
I would, I would recommend any of us in the council have comments on that letter, get them in. You know, uh, let's see, Wednesday, the twenty-ninth is still a few weeks away. But I think we ought to get it in quickly so that what the, what the committee reviews is a letter that we've already carefully, we ourselves have looked at. Uh, and, and tried us to keep the process going so that the letter could then be written, sent in, you know, very soon after the committee has looked at it.
Do you also want us to testify?
I, I don't, I personally would not, I support that. I think, I think we're really pushing on a string here. There are a lot of people involved and I, uh, this is one issue where I'm, with everything else this council is dealing with, I'm quite happy to let others take the lead and we're willing to put in our two cents worth in writing, but that's just me speaking. I'm certainly open to other views.
I bring it up only because my understanding, um, from section three's town manager is that they, the, at the public hearing on June twenty-ninth, they will make a vote right away. And I don't, I don't know if that's why I brought up the idea.
Well, what's, what's the point of, wait, I mean, I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt, but then don't we have to get our letter in long before the PSC can be?
There you go. So that's why I'm wondering if test, uh, whenever this letter is ready, but testifying that day might, might, or that whenever it occurs, it might actually.
Let me, let me suggest a different process then. I'm not sure testifying is the right thing to do yet, but what about quickly getting any comments from us and from the committee and just handle it, you know, by email? And I think we, under the circumstances, we ought to make sure we get our letter in by the early part of next week. Because it's important to have this record established a couple of weeks before the hearings on these things. Rich, you, you?
Yeah, I, I mean, I was chair of the PSC when we first looked at this thing and, um, to me, the speed is of the urgency because I, I, I had suspected they were going to schedule a hearing in the near future and they did. So it's June twenty-ninth. So we do need to get a letter in.
Yeah.
The other, I, I just asked Ron, I, I, my, does a letter, uh, constitute a testimony before the committee? Before the PSC in this administrative hearing? If we send it as?
You're, you're not obligated to testify and the, the letter will be considered. Uh, then in the, the last Pepco proceeding in which the town participated, I mean, there, there were comments in lieu of live appearance submitted by several jurisdictions and the PSC did find them persuasive.
Okay. So, so the, the letter would suffice as testimony?
Yes. Sorry. I didn't understand the question.
Okay. So let's, let's then make it, because you, we, we all have the draft, Ron, that you've sent around. Has that been submitted, submitted to the whole council has seen that, right?
I, I did not forward it to the whole council.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think so either.
Okay.
I can do that right now.
I think Barney, it's just you, me and Irene are the only ones, and Todd have seen it.
Okay. Why don't we do this? I'm, I, I think hopefully for, because we're the three who've thought, had a chance to think about this more. Let us mark up the letter and get at least one draft through it. Okay?
Okay.
Then send it to the rest of our colleagues at the council and also at the same time to the committee. Let's endeavor to get our comments back to Ron by the end of business tomorrow. So Ron, you can turn it around and we'll have, have a version that we can send to the rest of the council on Friday. And, uh, the committee and try to get comments back by Monday, Tuesday of next week and get the letter out by Tuesday, close of business. I mean, I think we ought to just move it. I think we're all realizing that with the hearing on the twenty-ninth and so this is my experience that if you want anything written to be read by anybody, you certainly want it in a couple of weeks in advance.
Thank you.
That's good. I'm glad, I'm glad we worked, talked through the issue of timing. The, um, okay, um, on, um, with that, then the, the last, I would like to, uh, with your concurrence, add a, a short agenda item, which is a discussion of the Purple Line. Uh, Joel had to step off of the call our, our, our town council meeting here, but Joel, Joel and I attended sequentially, uh, the Purple Line Community Action Team CAT meeting, which was held last night at the North Chevy Chase Elementary School. It was not a particularly detailed, uh, discussion, which probably is not surprising because frankly, I think they're all still coming to grips with the new contractor coming on board and getting up to speed. But, uh, the relevant, uh, key points are that, uh, from this summer, they will need three years to finish physical construction. So that'll presumably be finished sometime in the summer of twenty-twenty-five. And then they need another twelve to sixteen months of testing. So full operation would proceed by the, uh, winter of, or to say December of twenty-twenty-six. So that's the broadest overview of the current timeline. Their degree of confidence that they can keep that, who knows? But at least what they represent is that during this long hiatus between contractors, they have done a lot to get done a lot of the entanglements that they had had with the other various utility, utilities that had to be engaged to do their work, be it with power lines, water lines, whatever. And part of what had constituted the force majeure claims, the prior contractor was the, um, uh, the slow ups occurring because the, the, the other utilities that had to do their work before the contractors could do theirs were very slow in doing what they had to do. And so the representation is that a lot of that has been done. So that underbrush has been cleared away. So therefore we should have more confidence than we had before, uh, that they can finish the job in the three years that have been planned. In terms of the next six months, uh, first things which Todd referred to in his opening remarks tonight, is that they plan to finish the Sleepford Underpass, uh, by this fall, uh, which is very surprising to all of us. And that does indeed accentuate the importance of the work that Irene is leading us on here with Todd in respect to, to discussions with, with the S H A about improving the signalization. The other bits that came out are that over the next six months, they plan to do more work on the retaining walls behind the homes in, in the town of Chevy Chase. Um, I asked, well, this also include putting up the noise walls. The people at that session last night did not know. I've gone back to, uh, uh, Carla Julian, who has been re-engaged. That's very good news, by the way. We're delighted because she's a very effective liaison to, to the contractors. So it's good that she's back, uh, working for them. But she's, I run that down and get back to me in a few days. And I want to send out a note to the thirty-six homes that are the near neighbors and let them know what they can expect to happen over the next six months. The other work that'll be done in the next six months is that they will begin to work again in the shaft for the southern entrance of the metro. And, uh, they have to change the construction, uh, technique. The, the fellow spoke without any degree of humor or wryness whatsoever, but he said, you know, now that there's a building there, we have to do something different. I'm thinking, yeah. Anyway, um, so what they're actually going to do is build a temporary structure that's going to sit atop the shaft and have a kind of a pulley system, winch system, which will allow them to reach down and bring up the rocks as they continue to blast from the bottom where they currently are. As you may recall, they have to blast off the side of where the elevators are going to open to, through a lower concourse that's going to actually connect to the red line. And that, that expansion of that underground space is what still has to be blasted out. Uh, and that's what they're going to be doing. And they're going to be starting that over the next six months. I did ask, uh, Carla to, to check and she said she would as to when they will begin to do the work on the, um, building up the, the entrance and the, and the, and the, ultimately the, the bridge across the tracks at Elm Street Park. Uh, that's a very significant piece of infrastructure and obviously will affect the three or four homes that are right there at the end of Elm Street. And it would be nice to know when they plan to really start working on that, um, on that bit. Anyway, that's basically, uh, the core points. Um, and, um, I was just helping putting out an email, which was also the topic of the town council on, but I just wanted to report on that to the public tonight. Rich?
We made a, the towns made a series of, had a series of discussions and letters to go to the, what was the Purple Line Transit Partners about commitments like the sound horn, the wall and so forth. I would suggest that we resurrect those commitments and resend a letter that says, oh, you know, these are the things that we agreed to. You know, make sure they don't fall off your radar and, and we're, we're expecting these commitments to be honored.
I think that's an excellent idea and I'm happy to make sure that we get such a letter prepared and get it out. I think it's very important to do so. Because it's clearly not just new contractors, but there's a lot of turnover in the MTA staff too. And you know, who knows what they remember. So pulling back the, uh, the past documentation as amendments to this letter saying, by the way, I just want you to make sure you don't forget what's been committed to is, it's a very useful idea. Thank you. Irene?
I had a question for Todd. I don't know, um, we, we submitted a, a letter of support for a, um, some federal funding that the Capitol Crescent Tunnel, uh, was trying to get from the Department of Transportation. Did we ever find out how successful or not that particular proposal was?
I have not heard anything back.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right. On that, I think, uh, the only last time it was very quickly, that we have some issue about our July council meeting. If I can make it not, uh, virtually, it's not terribly easy, but I can. Joel was under I can make it virtually. It's not terribly easy, but I can. Joel was under more pressure. So at least want Todd to check around with, with us to see whether we can shift the date. And I don't know whether, and what I'd ask my colleagues to consider is whether we try to shift it to the week before, say around July 6th, or whether we move it to the week after. If it turns out that it's very difficult to move, then I think the spirit is that we keep the date and Joel and I just have to work around it in terms of what hours of day or night we have on the, on the video call. But at least want to ask the question and ask my colleagues to consider it, but I'm not looking for decisions. And I'm just pointing it out tonight. Go ask Todd or, or, or town office to follow up and figure out what day can work for all of us. But if we do change the date, it's important to let the community know that in advance so that there's no surprise. Okay. Is there any other business anybody wishes to raise at this time, other than wishing everybody a good night? Okay. Good meeting and a lot, a lot covered. I'm sorry that it went so long, but I'm not sure what we could easily have compressed. Variances. Rich, welcome to the world of variances. They all take but you know, it's, 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 it's very important for us. I mean, it's
Yes, it is.
Not something you can shortchange. You have to
We shouldn't.
So it's, it's, it's good stuff. All right. Well, thank you all very much for starting at six and going for four, four and a quarter hours and appreciate it. And we've got a lot to do. We'll get at it. All righty.
Night Barney.
Good night, everybody. Thank you. Bye.